We have a couple of public hearing items of business and then we have quite a bit of board business to do at the end of the meeting. But let's introduce folks who are here and who will be voting or not voting. I see a board member coming in, which gives us a full seven-member board, so Steve, you'll be participating but not voting. Starting from my far left, we've got Dennis Quintal, our town engineer, Steve Padfield, board alternate, who will not be voting tonight, vice chair Peter Coffin, board member Lynn Merrill, selectman representative Phil Combs, Glenn Koppelman here, to my right Ellen Faulkner, our administrative assistant and board alternate, also not voting, and then board members Chris Bashaw, Peter Bakie, Robin Dugay, and town planner Lynn Greenwood. And Adam, Adam behind the curtain doing the camera. Okay, first item on, hopefully everyone has an agenda, we passed them out earlier. If you don't, say so and we'll get you one. And if folks in the audience need to see an agenda, there are a couple of extra ones on the table right there. So the first item is a request for a continuance, and it is for the project at 53 Marshall Road by Joe Falzone, tax map R forty-one lot seven. Property owner is the Hazel M. Hanson heirs. And this is a request to continue until our January twenty-first, 2020 meeting. And do we have the actual written request to read? Or? Okay. And there, this proposal actually has two components to it. It has a lot line adjustment and a subdivision. And I believe that, I wasn't here last time, but I think the board might have dealt with one of the two, continuing it at last week's meeting.
We dealt with both. But you still have to do the one today because it was continued to the same time date.
So I believe it's the subdivision one that we need to deal with tonight. And the letter from Beals and Associates, which is the engineer of record for the project, states that, this is from Christian Smith, this is written to formally request the subject project applications be continued from the November nineteenth hearing, which is the lot line adjustment, and the December tenth, which is the subdivision, that's the one we're dealing with tonight, planning board hearings to January twenty-one, 2019. This will allow time to address staff and third-party engineering review comments, specifically develop a revised lot layout, et cetera, and review the concept amendment with the town circuit rider planner, actually it's town planner, and engineering consultant, and file the requisite revised plans, et cetera, in advance of the requested hearing date. Thank you for your continued time and consideration. Sincerely, Christian Smith, principal. Okay.
That was 2020, correct? You said 2019.
Did I?
Yes, it's 2019.
Well.
We understand.
Twenty twenty. Oh, well, actually, the letter says 2019.
For the record.
For the record.
For the record.
But it should be 2020, yes. January twenty-one, 2020. So we'd be looking for a motion to continue the subdivision portion of this application to January twenty-one, 2020 at six forty-five P.M.
So what?
Motion by Chris. Second by Peter Bakie.
Any requirements for other time to get the plans in?
Probably. What would you like, Ellen, for time in advance for receiving new materials?
January fifth.
Okay. All right. So Chris, you want to add that to your motion?
So what?
Sure.
That any new materials need to be received in the planning board office by January fifth, noon time?
Thank you.
So that's an amendment to the motion, and the secondor is okay with that?
January fifth is Sunday.
Well, that will be the wrong date.
How about nine?
Six, Monday.
Nine is a Thursday. Isn't usually we gonna have one?
You know.
Which?
The month, Thursday, Thursday, we gonna have. The second is fair because it's a day after holiday, and I think that's including the applicant, so why don't make it tonight?
Chris, are you okay with amending your motion?
I am.
To make it January nine at noon to be the deadline for receipt of material at planning board? Yes. And Peter, you're okay with that? Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, that's unanimous. The next one, there's no action required by us, and again, this might have been mentioned at last week's meeting, but the application for fifty, I'm sorry, sixty-one North Road, tax map R thirty-two-nine-A, Donald and Philip Pryor, the owner and applicant, has withdrawn the application. So there's no further action required by us on that. All right. So the next item is a public hearing, and I will read it. And Charlie, if you want to start getting himself stationed and set up. This is for Breznerham Moving and Storage Company at seven Marshall Road, tax map R forty-one lot seven-two. The applicant has submitted an amended site plan seeking approval for revisions to the previously approved site plan in regard to buffering and landscaping. And before I open it up to Charlie, I'm just going to do a quick preface and then suggest how we will proceed on it, just so that everyone is on the same page, and I know Charlie's going to go over this, but it was discovered that in the process of doing clearing on the site, that clearing of vegetation exceeded that that was approved on the original plan. And so conversation started with the, between the applicant and the selectman. The selectman decided appropriately, I believe, that it would require an amendment to the site plan to do something different. And so the selectmen sent the applicant to planning board, and that's why they're here with a revised plan for the landscaping and the buffering and vegetation. And so we do have, we do have a number of comment sheets to go along with this. We have a sheet from town engineer and a sheet from our town planner, which you each should have in place. We also have a comment sheet that was emailed to Conservation Commission, and if you don't have hard copies of that, you did receive it by email, but the chair of the Conservation Commission is here. So what I'd like to do is offer the applicant the chance to explain to us what your proposal is for the amendment. And then I would like us to go through all of the comments that we have from town departments, and from town engineer and town planner, before the board gets into its deliberation. I think it would be worth having the benefit of hearing the advice of our experts before we start debating it. And then, of course, it's a public hearing, so we will open it later to public comment. And so if there are folks here in the audience for that, we will allow time for public comment or questions after some of this other discussion has taken place. Mr. Zilch, okay, we do have some copies of plans. You guys all set over there?
This is the original one. I think that's all I have.
Okay. We can use this one, no?
Well, that's just the original plan, that's not the revised.
Oh, it's not the revised plan. You wouldn't happen to have extra copies, would you?
I bought this one additional, and I also bought the presentation.
That's fine. All right.
I've seen it.
Well, it's fine. I can look over and see that. That's, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Well, as you mentioned, there is obviously, I'm sure everybody's.
Charlie, would you please introduce the two of you?
Oh, sure. Again, Charlie Zilch from SEC for the record, with Joe Breznerham, the owner of the property at seven Marshall Road. So as you had mentioned, and I'm sure pretty much everyone's aware, that there was an overcut on the property that went beyond the limits of the limit of cutting that we had staked out on the property. And it affected some wetland buffers, some property line buffers, as well as areas outside of those buffers as well. So in all, there's probably about four areas that were overcut that were not to be disturbed on the, as per the original site plan. And so Joe, that happened at the onset of the construction, which was back about March and April, sometime around there. So Joe was allowed to work on the site, as obviously, as you can see, it's pretty well constructed. And then as the, as the overcut became an issue, he was denied occupancy on some of the buildings. And then it became an enforcement issue, more or less handled by the selectmen, as you stated. So we worked with the selectmen, had a couple of public hearings, as well as a site meeting, trying to develop something here to address the issue. And what it really comes down to is trying to reestablish buffers and make an assessment as what really needs to be put back in place here. Do we want to disturb wetland buffers and get back there and put plantings again? Or do we want to plant around it at the limits of disturbance, things like that? So we went back and forth throughout quite a few suggestions, and ultimately, at the last selectment hearing in October, October twenty-eighth, we pretty much satisfied three of the four selectmen with this plan that we submitted for your review tonight. Phil abstained, as was he as I am here with planning board, so respectfully. So like I said, we submitted this plan in hopes that it's a good point to take from. And I guess what I really should do is just kind of go through what Joe was obligated to plant, in addition to what was to remain. So with that original plan, for the section along one-twenty-five, as you can see, he's already planted a variety of hardwoods, about thirty-seven in total, to kind of back up the existing foliage, the existing tree line that runs along the right-of-way on one-twenty-five. And he also added a bunch more plantings in and around the buildings as required by the site plan. So in all, he added about thirty-seven hardwoods around the development, as well as along the roadway buffer. In addition to that, he also established that pretty densely packed buffer line along the southerly property line, where there's some encroachment from the southerly butters that are off of Marshall Road. As you may recall, they had some structures right at or over the property line. Joe's already installed along the top of a farm, he created about fifty, I think it's fifty arborvitae that you put in along there. Fifty staggered row arborvitae. So he's already put in about eighty-seven trees, as per the original site plan. And so what he'd like to do is kind of bolster that in those areas. He wanted to add another row of pine trees along the easterly end of that arborvitae line. He also wanted to add, over on the westley property line against the farm, a dozen of white pines, basically right in the buffer, just to add some density and some visual buffer right close to the farm. And so then, you know, those are kind of on the outside edges of the property. So then we really talked about what to do about the areas that were cut in the middle of the property, and particularly the section along one-twenty-five, along the northerly section. And ultimately, what we decided, and we hope that this board will accept, is we didn't want to go back into the areas that were cut, particularly around the wetland buffers and disturb them anymore. Right now, they're starting to revegetate, they've grown probably about two feet this year. And I know it's a long process, it is a renewable resource, it will come back. But we thought what might be a better alternative is to plant some high-density buffer lines. And you can see on the plan, we've got two of them, each totaling about fifty trees in each one for another hundred trees. We've got one that's on the southerly side of his second phase of development, which would be on the northerly side of the existing phase. And that runs all the way across the northerly end of all those vernal pools, there's three vernal pools over there. And so that would be a double row of varied species, pretty densely packed all along there. It's about a four-hundred-foot length and about fifty trees within that length. And what that does is it establishes not only a visual buffer, but it also provides a limitation of the work on site. I mean, obviously, Joe's not going to go beyond a buffer that he just planted. So it provides protection for the area that has already been cut, allows it to revegetate, and provides nice visual buffer in the meantime. And the second one that he wanted to do is, again, kind of on the high line, running parallel with one-twenty-five on the easterly side of the second phase. We see there's another row, that one, I think, is slightly less than four-hundred feet long, and again, about fifty trees of varied species to hopefully reestablish the growth in there. And also, it does the exact same thing, it provides a limit of disturbance, it keeps him out of areas that have already been disturbed, and it'll provide for that area to revegetate as well. So, I mean, yes, I'm sure that everybody's disappointed that this was overcut. Joe didn't benefit from this. Planting trees is expensive, I think by his estimate, it's about three hundred dollars a tree. As you can see with the plan, what we've already planted, what we're proposing to plant is another total of two hundred trees. You can do the math pretty easily on that. It's not a high-visibility site. He's colored the buildings forest green and tan, so they don't stick out, not a lot of lighting here, not a lot of activity on site, not a lot of visual distraction. I think the buffers that we're providing are appropriate. I think they basically do the task that was designed to do, which is to allow visual buffers and allow the areas that have been cut to revegetate without any further disturbance. And one of the other benefits is, you know, I'm not making this up, but it is a diverse wildlife habitat in there now. You've got like a scrub shrub area, and deer have moved into that site, he's got hawks, and he's had an eagle on site, taking advantage of some of the open space. So it's not all bad. It is unfortunate, but I think the short term we're proposing helps correct it, long term, everything will come back, and it will be a really nice site when it's all said and done. I guess that's really about all I got at this point. That's pretty much what the application is, there's no other plan changes, it's all about reestablishing the buffer and providing some visual here.
Okay, thank you. I'd like, I'd like to ask you one question, though, before I, before I ask for department Were you the one who flagged the no-cut, Charlie?
Yes. Our firm, yes.
Okay. Could you explain to the board and the folks here what that flagging consisted of, and how visible it was, and, you know, just to get a sense for it?
Sure. What we did is basically initially, it was a combination of if there was an area that there were, what we did is we state the limit of disturbance, or the limit of activity on the site. And so that equates to be basically the limit of cutting, okay? And so the majority of the site was wooded, so what we did was tied flags to trees at any sort of angle point. If there was a long length from one angle point to another, we would hang flags in between that. So it was a pretty easily discernible trail of fluorescent orange flags to follow. We did have the woodcutter on site, I don't know if he was walked through the entire thing, but he was aware they were out there, were flagging the limits of cutting. And so it was done from the southerly end of the property all the way to the northern for all phases.
So in your mind, the flagging was very visible?
I feel so, yes. I mean, if there was any question, we were pretty available to answer any questions of motive at the flag.
Sure. All right. Why don't we, why don't we get department comments now? Did we get anything in writing, by the way, permanently? I know we have Conservation here, and Dennis and Glenn have comments. Dennis or Glenn, would you like to start?
I've been on site many more times than I have.
Yes, I was out there right from the beginning of, when the tree cuttings were there, basically on that southerly section there, and right at that time, I did notice on the easterly side of Vernal Pool One, there was some disturbance there, overcut, and I made note of that. Talked to one of the members of Charlie's staff about that, and to make sure that the rest of the area was flagged. And soon after that, when some of the excavation and stump removal was being done to the northerly side of building three, that area had some of the, was overcut, and some of the stumps were removed. And I had talked to the contractor, and I said realistically, those stumps should be put back, because that was like on the plateau area of the, or within the Vernal Pool Buffer Zone. And I didn't want any erosion going over the hill into the Vernal Pool, so I said if you could put some of the stumps back and put some wood chips around it, just to make sure that there's no erosion going down into the Vernal Pool, at least at that point in time, that would stabilize that area and protect it. And he did that, he did a great job, I think that that, and he also put some chips over on that near Vernal Pool One as well. And it wasn't until later on that I noticed the other areas that were done. So based on the plan that I got, this revised amended plan, I offer these comments for the board to consider. Again, just my take on this. The intent of the plan is to modify the existing approved landscape design and show additional plantings to mitigate the areas that have been overcut. I find three extra trees along the frontage, I find four extra trees behind the office building, I find fifty extra trees along the limit of cut on the south side of the wet pond, I find twelve extra trees along the west lot line, I find fifty trees along the limit of cut on the east, east of phase, the last phase. These additional trees do not restore the remaining area of overcut. More important is that area within the Vernal Pool Buffer, work within the Vernal Pool Buffer is allowed, is, was allowed and shown on the approved plan with understanding that all other buffer areas would, Vernal Pool Buffer areas would remain, and therefore should be restored, therefore should be restored. Number two, the zoning ordinance has a section on landscape buffer requirements, Article one oh eight. This could be used as a guide for full overcut restoration. For a dense buffer area B, it shows twenty-two trees per five thousand square feet, that's one tree every two-hundred-and-twenty-seven square feet. This density could be considered within the Vernal Pool Buffer and within fifty feet along the budding properties. Between these areas, a less buffer, which is area A, shown, that shows nine trees per five thousand square feet, that's one tree every five-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet. And also, number three is, this amended plan should also show the additional paving that was done beyond what was approved, and that's at the end of the existing building three, each end of the building three, where there's some extra doors and a little extra pavement parking there. And those are the, those are the comments that I have come up with and consider that.
Yes, Mr. Breznerham.
Can I address Dennis, please?
Sure. I was hoping to get all the comments first, but if you have specific questions for Dennis, we can do that now.
So Dennis visited the site many times. When did you have a conversation with Sam Born about putting the stumps back in? What month?
I couldn't say for sure, but it was, it was probably midsummer, June or July.
Mid-July.
It could have been that.
When did they cut those trees down?
Oh, I have no idea. They were done early, early this week.
Early April. So I know you've visited the site many times. We had all the cotton done mid-April, and you picked it up in mid-July.
Right.
You had a conversation with him on a Wednesday to restore that area. He did it on Thursday, you came back on Friday in mid-July and said it was perfect. Nothing else would need to be done in that area, it was perfect?
At that time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Glenn, would you like to do your comments?
Sure.
And again, the board has a copy of Glenn's comments, you can follow along.
I have, this is the first public hearing for this application, sole purpose of which is to establish.
Glenn, would you please pull that just a little closer to you? Thank you.
Again, this is the first public hearing for this application, the sole purpose of which is to establish appropriate buffers on site due to the clear cut that occurred in conjunction with construction of the self-storage facility. The board should consider invoking jurisdiction on the plan to begin the sixty-five-day review clock, although the proposed plantings are just a starting point with this application, the board has adequate information with which to begin consideration. The following are my comments upon reviewing the plan, and they are as such. The approved site plan indicated that natural vegetation that has remained is reflected by an existing tree line detailed on the plan. The bulk of this natural vegetation was removed, and the new plan shows double rows of mixed tree varieties. These trees serve to create a linear buffer for most of the vernal pools located on the site. This proposed planting does not approximate the buffer that was removed, and that perhaps we could have the county forester over at the county complex in Brentwood review this and provide guidance with respect to how well the proposed plantings will protect the vernal pools. Now, the two items that I think the board are going to consider are whether the plantings as proposed buffer the site appropriately. And I know that that's really important to the board and to the town, and it's important to me, but it's less important to me than the protection of the vernal pools, just because of my natural proclivity to protect vernal pools. So, and that's, that's the sole reason that I'm suggesting that we have the county forester go out, to see if there's something other than trees that may actually provide a better way of establishing a buffer for the vernal pools. And so I'd like the board to consider that.
And I'm sure that we'll have discussion about that when we open it up for the boards to chat about it. Anything else planned on, before I move on to some other?
Nope, you can move on.
We have three town department comments, one from Health indicating no comment. Building inspector, he has two comments related to the address of the property, so it has nothing to do with what we're, with what we're talking about, but since the comment was submitted, I will, I will read it for the record. And one is, a Marshall Road address without access to Marshall Road, only route one-twenty-five. So that's a statement. And then number two is the question, shouldn't the address be a one-twenty-five address? Okay. And I would assume that property on the tax card for the town indicates that it's Marshall Road, does it not?
It would probably be able to, please keep full of the nine-one-one.
Okay. And I'm guessing that there might still be the possibility of a Marshall Road access at some point. I know that you guys were still working on that, and who knows?
Who knows?
Okay. So the third department comment, and this is the final one that we have in writing, is from Conservation Commission, and the Conserva, I was looking, I was looking at Margie before, and in my mind, I'm saying Conservation Commission Chair, and all of a sudden, Evy walks in, and they're, "Oh, yes, I had the wrong person." Okay. But Evy is here now. I'm happy to read this if you like, or if you would like to verbalize it, you can. Okay. All right. I will read this. It's dated December ten, which is today, and it's from the Conservation Commission regarding this plan that we're looking at. And it says that the Conservation Commission is extremely disappointed in the amount of overcut on this property, especially within vernal pool buffers. In accordance with Town Ordinance two oh two B, vernal pools receive the maximum buffer width of one hundred feet. Vernal pools can only function effectively as amphibian and invertebrate breeding grounds if their uplands remain undisturbed. All this was thoroughly discussed with engineers, visited, sorry, when engineers when engineers visited the Conservation Commission early in 2018 to present plans. Although some disturbance to the buffers was later approved for stormwater management, there should not have been a need to fell mature trees. Removing the tree canopy heats up the water in the pools, negatively impacting the species that breed there and associated wildlife. The Conservation Commission's recommendations is that Mr. Breznerhan hire a certified environmental consultant to review the overcuts, to make recommendations, and to supervise the restoration, restoration of disturbed Vernal Pool Buffers. Greater harm to these sensitive areas may result if the construction crew is allowed to work without such supervision. Respectfully, Kingston Conservation Commission. Okay. So that, that's the extent of the input that we've gotten from, from, from various town departments and, uh, and, and experts. I said that we would then open it up to board discussion. I'm wondering if we should take public comment now, uh, to get it all out on the table and then we can, and then we can get into the discussion. So if, there, I see two people that I don't recognize, so I, I'm guessing you might be here for, uh, for this hearing. Uh, if you are, and if you have a comment or question, now would be the time to do it. And if, if you'd like to, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the table and sit where Charlie's sitting and use the microphone there. No? Oh, we have one taker. Okay. Once you get settled, I'll just ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Cynthia Fellowes, fifteen Marshall Road. Um, my biggest concern is the fact that I can see everything from my house. And I'm hoping that you put in some kind of trees or something so that I don't see the buildings. Aside from that, I don't have any issue.
Are you right behind me with the tent? I went up tent that night, huh?
Yes, that's me.
Um, yes.
Charlie, could you point to the plan where this, where this is?
Right in the middle, I think Charlie, this would be fourteen, thirteen, oh, thirteen over here.
Yes, that's it.
You said fifteen Marshall Road?
Fifteen Marshall, yes. And that, that's my only concern. That's all I have. I'm sorry. It is quiet. It is very quiet. That's how we like it.
Okay.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I close public comment, one last opportunity. No? Okay. So public comment is closed. I'll now bring it back to the board and open it up for discussion. And please use, please get close to your microphones.
Um, my one comment is that, uh, we're missing quite a bit of, uh, discussion with the, the selectmen. And I was wondering if Phil could fill us in, no pun intended, with the, uh, what went on between the selectmen and what, uh, they had recommended.
He might be able to.
So, initially this was, uh, when this was brought to our attention, we put a stop on any building permits on the project. So that no permits would be issued until this had been addressed. Because that action took place, it was through the selectmen that it was dealt with. And on our second meeting out on the site, it was brought up that this is a change to the site plan. So it wouldn't fall under the selectmen to remedy this because the planning, this would fall under the, the planning board's purview because it was a change of the, a, a major change to the site plan. So at that time, it was believed, it was felt that that should go back to the planning board, which is why we're here tonight.
Did you negotiate any number of trees or type of filling or?
Uh, there was a site walkout on site with myself, Dennis, and, uh, Rich St. Hare, who's the, uh, tree warden for the town. And we had some thoughts, but we basically just said, bring us a plan and tell us what you're, I'm not a forestry expert, so, and, and we weren't gonna give guidelines and that, it's just trying to remedy the situation. Um, and then the other discussion took place where this really wasn't the selectmen's authority to usurp the planning board. And, but there, there was discussion that some of the selectmen were comfortable with this plan. The initial plan that came to us, we were not comfortable with. Uh, we felt it lacked the necessary numbers. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, this is even more than what you brought the second time, isn't it?
This is a considerable change, this plan. No, this is about what we had shown the selectmen.
Okay. I just, I thought on the northern side of 125, there looked like there was more trees and some along the wet pool. But, um, yeah, I think we were moving in the right direction at that time. I, I will say personally, picture doesn't do it justice here to go on site and see some of the conditions that are there. Cause there are, there, there is a rationale behind where these are being put. And I, I fully agree with the Vernal Pool thing, but there are some of these spots where 125's up here. We're gonna plant trees and it's not gonna fix anything. It's, you know, the bell's been rung and they're gone. And so I, I mean, I, I think there is value to doing a site walk for the board members to see what exactly we're talking about because I don't feel that looking at a piece of paper on this really shows, um, the full conditions there. Of course, how much snow was there after today, I don't know, but, um, you know, one of the things that was brought up, you had an R burst out.
Right.
And he had raised some concerns about re-disturbing the areas that had already been cut. And if you go in there, you know, where the stumps are, there are trees already coming up. As Charlie said, about two to three feet. And obviously those are gonna do better than anything that is planted on the site. But I do think the concern about the Vernal Pools is, is very valid and should be addressed by a competent professional who can say that is, secure those areas to the satisfaction of the town. But I, I, I do feel that a site walk is definitely warranted just so everybody can kinda see the conditions as they sit today.
Uh, before we get much further, um, Glenn is recommending that, uh, the plan is complete enough for jurisdiction. So if the board feels that way, we should probably deal with that now and that will get the, uh, get the sixty-five day clock started.
I'll move if we accept the plan, um, that is, today, which is dated October twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, uh, for sure.
Motion, motion by Peter Coffin.
Second.
Second by Peter Baiki. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous? Okay.
Um, we have two recommendations for types of professionals who would be dealing with this. Glenn has recommended, uh, county forester and I believe Conservation Commission has mentioned, um, a certified environmental consultant. Obviously there's two possibilities. One is the person hired by Mr. Breznerhan and one, uh, might be another person, uh, to review that hired by the board, uh, on the ESCO account. And I think we ought to get some idea, some recommendations on, on who the best people are to, um, to address how you recreate as best as possible, uh, buffers going around the Vernal Pool. I think, I think the border buffers are, are more of a aesthetic thing and I don't think that's gonna require a whole lot of, um, you know, additional help. But I think as far as soil scientist or, um, whatever kind of scientist we need to address the Vernal Pool protections. There's three, at least three or four, three, four Vernal Pools on the property that are, have been affected by this, severely affected. And I, I think we need, need to figure out, uh, whom to go to, cause I, I, quite frankly, I don't know. Not my area of expertise. That's all I know, so.
Well, obviously the, the county forester, we know who that is. Uh, and that's an easily identified person if we, if we chose, if we chose to go that route.
Right. And that person could recommend somebody else if felt that wasn't, needed more, more assistance or.
I'm, I'm not sure what the best way to, to approach that is. Evy, did you, if you have a comment, I need you to come to a microphone though.
I was just gonna say that the county forest, forester is a forester, but I think that really we need, um, certified wetland scientist or people that are, what I said in my comments, that, to, um, to work on this, to do the actual wetlands restoration or Vernal Pool restoration here. I don't think the county forester is capable of recreating that buffer.
And in your, in your note, you, you, you suggest a certified environmental consultant.
Thank you.
To, 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 to do two things. One, to make recommendations and two, to supervise the work.
Right, right. And I'm thinking more on the lines that the C camps or go of environmental.
Peter?
Um, Glenn, what I, what I, what I'm seeing here, um, it's an unfortunate situation. You're not gonna rebuild a fifty-foot tree. I don't care what you do. And I can tell you the property that I was familiar with down there was a lot of standing pine. When you cleared the front, that pine was coming down. The wind wasn't gonna protect it. So there's issues with that. Um, speaking from personal experience, I have marked boundary lines for a large track lane to be cut. And the logger took them right down. And they, I had a set guideline. So I kinda feel the situation here. And I had to plant a bunch of stuff myself. I don't think he intentionally cut this property. And now, now we're looking at it, you, you can see by the work he's put into this and the money that he's put into this by the plantings. He's willing to do anything with the town, for the board, to make up what has happened. You, you can't put a fifty-foot tree back up again. So what do we do? So do we keep delaying this and costing money, 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 and you're gonna have the same outcome? So I think we have an applicant that's willing to work with us. And I just think that there's avenues we could go to, uh, without being mediated for the next two years because we cut down some trees. And I'm not saying that it's okay, but I don't think the fault is with the gentleman sitting at the stable. Cause I, I've been in that situation and that logger went right down and cleared everything flat. It's all about the money.
Right. But you have readdressed against the logger. If he's cut into, into a well-marked zone, that's where, um, yeah, I agree with you, exactly. Goes to, and, and, um,
I agree with you.
Toward the rush, you know, so this, this isn't, this, this, the town shouldn't be paying, or the environment shouldn't be paying for what is clearly, you know, whether it's intentional or not is irrelevant. It's, it was a mistake that is costing him money. So it, his redress is to go to the person who made the mistake.
So we have a guideline on a replanting of a buffer. We have guidelines on that and we follow those guidelines.
Right, which is what Dennis is talking about.
Why are we going over and above that?
Well, we aren't. The, um, Dennis is, um, from the, the book, there's.
Is there guidelines on replanning a Vernal Pool or a wetland buffer?
No, that's what we need, the information, what would be required to protect that. You know, as you say, you're not supposed to put a fifty-foot tree up and, you know, you're not gonna create a, uh, you know, instant shade in an area that has been in a forested stand. But, uh, you've got to some way of finding out what the best outcome to protect that Vernal Pool from just drying out and, uh, and, and going away, so, um.
I, I used, I, I, I have to be in agreement. I, I think it's gonna be high press to find somebody to go back in and tell you to just stir up all that land around that Vernal Pool.
Well, that's why, that's why it's the professionals. As you say, their, their recommendation is no, it would be worse to disturb it. Um, go in and, and, you know, do some plantings with less disturbance or whatever. But, uh, you know, that's, that's what we need, the professional advice. Because, uh, you're, you're dealing with stuff that is, uh, you know, it's, it's serious. So they knew where they were and they knew where they were cutting, so.
Now, is, is the current state of the site due to the selectmen's role in this? Is that, so they currently, no matter what, no occupancy permits or no continued activity with?
No, um, and I forgot to bring that part up. So this is going back and forth. They were developing a plan, assessing what exactly had been taken down in opposition to the, the approved site plan. Obviously, no trees are gonna get planted until May. And so what we had said is for Phase One and Two, we will issue occupancy permits for those areas. They've shown a willingness to work with us. They've developed a plan. I think it's just a matter of figuring out where things need to go and in what configuration and who, which expert tells us what needs to happen where. We weigh that as a board and go forward, but, um, this is not something that we're gonna stop. Okay. Phase One and Two is.
That, cause that, that's a big concern for me because, you know, obviously we have individuals here who recognize as a problem. They're willing to take responsibility for that problem. They're willing to work towards resolving that problem. And the last thing I wanna see is, you know, hey, if, if the board decides that, okay, we, we still need to work to restore this, I still want them to be able to utilize the site in the meantime. Cause obviously we've had situations throughout the town where people have just completely scoffed at any type of enforcement, completely blown off board, selectmen. We've revoked entire site plans due to hazardous material concerns and activity is conducted on those sites for years after. So, uh, my, just my big concern is that if we have somebody here that's willing to go forward, I also want to promote them being able to use the site while the restoration, while some type of restoration occurs.
Absolutely. And that, and that condition was put there from the board of selectmen. Basically, nothing's gonna happen with Phase Three until this is resolved, but Phase One and Two can take place.
Just so that everyone understands what Phase One and Phase Two and Phase Three is, Charlie, could you please point to, to Phase One and Two?
Yeah, let me just kind of.
And then Three as well?
Phase One and Two basically involves, uh, all the building on the southerly end.
The souther, southerly part?
Yeah, as well as putting in all the detention area in this area as well. This is basically Phase Three, which is the final build out of all the northeast buildings.
Yep. So.
And so, and so would that limited activity be occupancy permits in Phase Three? Or no, no additional construction of their facilities at this time during Phase Three?
It was legal, there was no construction in Phase Three.
Correct. And it's in the same, for the same reason that no trees will be planted until May. I mean, the ground is gonna be froze again, maybe? So, um, you know, a, again, it was out of recognition that they are willing to work with us, but there also is something that we're able to hold some leverage on as well.
Glenn?
So I do believe that the applicant and his engineer have certainly been moving forward in good faith. And that should be recognized. I only have one question, and that is, I'm sorry, isn't this, this is non? It is? I'm not, I'm. Thank you, Phil. Um, I, just to repeat, I do believe that the applicant and his engineer have been moving forward and have, from the big, from the get-go, been acting in good faith. Um, and that that should be recognized. I do think that there is one question. And I, and I, apparently it varies on who the person is to answer the question, but the one question we have is, how do we restore the Vernal Pools? Is it done by not touching them anymore? So we don't create any more hazards or, and let them naturally reform? Or is it done by some sort of action and encroachment, back encroachment, reincroachment on that area? And I don't, I, I'm certainly not the kind of person that can answer that question. I'm not sure who is, but I think that's really what the crux of where we are is what's the best path. I do know that, um, in my neighborhood, there was someone that cut, clear-cut somebody else's land. And, yeah. And, um, obvious, and it was right next to the lake. And there was a major issue about it with, um, the homeowner of the person whose land had been cut. And it just seemed like within two or three years, we turned around and the entire area had been restored back to its natural state. It was ama- it was absolutely amazing how quickly it was restored. Um, obviously the big trees were gone, but the rest of it grew up very quickly with no encroachment on it. So I'm not really sure what that, that question is, is should it be left alone? Or should there be some reincroachment upon that property? And that's a question that I think once it's answered, we know how we're gonna move forward, which could be done at probably the next meeting. And I do like the idea of a site visit.
Uh, in regards to the Vernal Pools, uh, there's four from out here. Um, they have a wetland, uh, limit around them as well. So these Vernal Pools are within a wetland pocket. Uh, there was never any direct impact on any of the, the actual Vernal Pools or wetlands. It's only the trees of the buffer, on the outer limit of the buffer around these Vernal Pools that was affected. So we didn't directly affect or directly impact any Vernal Pools. It's only the. It's only the buffer on the outer limit of the buffer, of the vernal pool buffers. So there is still a mature tree stand around each one of these buffers.
Yeah, that's something we can't, can't, if you look at the map, so I
I guess a site visit is important.
That we really need to see this, this, I, I can't look at this map and say, where are the existing trees that weren't that? How far in, you know, it's not shown. I chose where you were gonna plant a few more trees. But I don't know if everything's been scarified. I mean, it's kind of from one point five, looks like it's just, you know, moved further.
Well, I mean, right now, it's, it's New England. I mean, I can see the Sears building, that's gonna be six hundred feet back. So I mean, you're gonna be able to see right through. I can see all the way through to the farm out on the other side of this thing right now. But when the trees come back, and when, when spring does its thing, it's gonna come pretty densely, I think. But uh, yeah, I think a sidewalk would be a benefit. I mean, there is, like I said, there's still a good mature tree stand around all these vernal pools and wetlands. It's the outer limit that, that we're considering.
Ellen?
Isn't it logical, based on the discussion, that you would take Glenn and Conservation Commission's recommendation to have somebody come in who is the professional to say what is or is not disturbed, what is the best way to get it back to somewhat where it was before? Cause everyone's guessing, but everybody keeps saying, I don't have the answer. So rather than have everybody keep guessing what the answer is, wouldn't it be trying to get somebody in to look at it as soon as possible, so that at the next meeting, we might have an answer and you can do a sidewalk in the meantime?
Which gets us around to the question, um well, Fercle is to who? Is it somebody like Mike C camp, or is it somebody like the county forester?
Well, it's two separate things. We've got a wetlands issue, and then we've got a buffer issue that's just for, I think the county, the county forester would be the one to ask in this area about, you know, in the, in the upland area. And then, I don't know Dennis, a wetland scientist, or who do you think would be a competent professional then?
C camps do uh, a lot of uh, wetland restoration projects, and not, not only wetlands, but also wetland buffer restorations. That's what their profession is, and so they're, they're involved with that all the time, and, and very familiar with vernal pools. And what's, what's uh important to maintain the vernal pools. And, and, and listening to the comments from the Conservation Commission, it is, it is something that's uh where the sun does get through some of the buffer area and get the vernal pool, and can change the temperature and can, change the environment there. So the trees planted on the north side of the, the uh vernal pools um are certainly something that they're willing to do and, and maybe just consider some on the southerly side as well to help, help shade those uh vernal pool areas. And, and again, my concern at that time, back in the middle of the summer, was erosion, not, not necessarily restoration. I was focusing on making sure that there was gonna be no erosion that would get into the uh, the uh vernal pool, so. But a sidewalk would be uh something that really would open your eyes, I think, also.
Okay. Uh go ahead Ellen, and then
Well, just didn't, didn't we have some uh previous applicant who had an issue with the vernal pool? And didn't the state or somebody come down and check it?
We said.
I don't wanna say we said. We should let you know we said. But didn't somebody put a driveway or something too close to a vernal pool and cut some things? Wasn't it just the state who came down and?
I don't wanna say.
I do not want to say.
Uh we had a representative at that time, from the uh district. Uh and I think uh it was uh from the Conservation District, who was a wetland scientist, a soil scientist, who came in as an, uh, an expert.
Same, you said much before, I didn't know.
Yep, and then certainly something that the Conservation District could have both of those felt. The uh forester and uh county forester and, and the uh Conservation District uh soil scientist who also uh would do the same thing.
Charlie, who do you use for a wetland person? You must obviously deal with this often.
I've always used Timothy Ford. Uh he's semi-retired now, but he still does all the mapping for me. I found him to be uh extremely good at what he does.
Professional on the wetland and the vernal pool.
Maybe the void.
But that's for wetland mapping.
He's a, he's a soil scientist, yeah, certified soil scientist and a wetland scientist.
I understand that, but I think we're talking about perhaps maybe just a little different skillset with regard, with regard to restoration, but
Well, the Conservation District does a lot of review work for towns, so that's, that's really an avenue that typically towns hire the Conservation District and their agents.
Evy, did you have?
I'll have to explain anything from Tim or anything like that.
Of course not, no. Yeah, Glenn?
Do you want to speak for a second, Evy?
Um I'm hearing a lot of conversation going around about buffers and the fact that the pool is still there. It's good that the pool, or the area where the pool is in the springtime, sometimes autumnal pools, is still there is a good thing. It's a very fragile environment, um and this is why it's afforded as much protection as it gets. Um and so the, the, the buffer ear, it's afforded a hundred feet at least. It actually should have much greater upland than it has, because now a lot of what's surrounding it is impervious. But at least it was afforded that amount of buffer. The salamanders and things that breed in the pool then crawl out and crawl into the buffer and upland zone. They hide in certain places, um an environmental scientist or um the Conservation District would be a great choice too. Um understands where the amphibians go and what their habits are. They will know where to replant. They will know which native plants are beneficial to put back in there if they've been removed or disturbed. They'll know where not to walk, where to walk. Um and I just really think it should be overseen and at least a plan made by a professional. Um you know, I could make guesses, but my guesses may be totally wrong. So the same, I think, with a forester, the same with um just a work crew putting in trees to try to replace what was there. Are gonna be tromping on a lot of hidden um invertebrate uh, you know, areas that are underfoot. So I just think that that area, we're in the middle of the sixth greatest extinction. If we don't tighten our belts right here where we live in Kingston, with small projects like this, and try to maintain sensitive habitats, we're gonna lose more and more species. And it keeps going and going, the whole ecosystem shifts, and we're all affected by it eventually. So we have to be strict about the planning board, the select board, have to be strict about making companies who come in and wanna build, understand what the rule is and go by the rule. Uh these buffers were marked and they were harvested anyway. Um we in conservation begin to get very frustrated. People come to us, engineers come to us, and when they come to us and speak to us, and we tell them, well, this needs to be left alone. It's, oh, yeah, 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 no problem. And then we come back a year later and trees have been cut. Um so it may seem like a small thing to a big businessman. To an environmentalist, to somebody who's watching over these sensitive areas for the town, it is a big thing. It's a huge thing. And we need somebody who knows how to deal with this small environment to be doing it. Not me. I'm just a person that, you know, got on the commission and have been learning as I go. You need a, a, a scientist to be able to look at those areas and make sure that they're reestablished properly. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, so other comments from the board? So I, I, I'm, I'm hearing three things. One is expressed interest in sidewalk. To get a sense for what the property looks like on the ground. The possibility of having a forester, maybe the county forester, evaluate the the buffer areas, and then an environmental consultant to provide a plan and detail for how we deal with the areas around the vernal pools.
You looking for a motion?
W- w- well, I mean, we, we, we could, I mean, if, if the board is, is, is up for deciding on a sidewalk, we could certainly talk about that now and, and get that out of the way.
I, I think I'd be comfortable doing a sidewalk before I started imposing all these other things that end up costing them money.
I agree.
Would it be possible, Glenn, to forward these plans to the county conservation office and just say, you know, have them review them and just say, this is who should come out and look at it?
Yeah, they, they, I mean, if we send this to RCCD, their, their specialist is going to be most likely Mike Cuomo. And if we send it to the county forester, he's, he's going to come out I'm pretty sure for no cost. Um that's not the case with RCCD. There, there is definitely a billable um necessity there. And my, the only reason I'm suggesting the, the forester is because um he, he may have insights as to how to accomplish some of the things that we're talking about, that the, the, the over the um canopy, re- reclaiming some sort of canopy around those vernal pools. My, my suggestion would be, if at all possible, to have them at the sidewalk. Because I think that's going to accomplish way more in the end run than us going out and lo- I've, I've already gone. It wouldn't, it would do me no good to go see the site again without a specialist.
Well, and frankly, it's not gonna do any good for any of us sitting at the table here to be on site and making some judgment about the vernal pool buffer, because none of us have that expertise. So, so either, so
I can start that conversation with RCCD, but there is gonna be a cost associated there. Um the discussion with the county forester, there isn't going to be a cost.
I, I mean, if I mean, it would be great if we could get both of them on site with the planning board all at the same time, and the applicant as well.
And this only, is all compounded by the fact that we got a lot of snow melt in the last couple of days. So a sidewalk seems legitimate. And if we get seven inches of snow, um two days before the sidewalk, I don't know how legitimate it is for us to be all tromping out there and expecting to, to have a lot of result.
So is it, I mean, normally we do sidewalks on weekends, uh in the morning. Is it reasonable to think that, that the person from the county and from the Conservation District would be available at that time?
Yeah, I think, I, 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 I'm sure that Mike, on occasion, does weekend work.
Okay. All right.
He comes down from Maine, however.
Oh, he does?
Yes.
Okay.
And he has knowledge of vernal pool restoration?
Oh yeah, he, he's, he's, he's done that for communities um throughout southeast New Hampshire.
He's, he's the one who worked on that site that I was talking about, Jeff.
Okay, well, I guess the, the, hang on just a second. The, the quandary that, that, that I think we're in though, is that we can set a date, but we don't know if those two individuals are gonna be available.
Yeah, I think we're at the point now where we need to um cause they're the most important element. Uh we need to work on their schedule, and then perhaps by email, uh Glenn, to work on that, and by email calling the board to see if we can uh see what kind of response, who's gonna be available, who would want to be there on that date.
Well, we're not supposed to have snow until Tuesday. I would think if we could get on the site, we should try, try for this weekend.
I just, I, I, I would caution us, that may be
Yeah.
A, a bit much. And, and maybe I'm completely wet about um them not wanting to have any snow at all, I'm sure. And these, I'm gonna say, these vernal pools are some of the most obvious vernal pools that I've dealt with on sidewalks. There's no mistaking these vernal pools. Um I've been on vernal pool walks where they were telling me I was looking at a vernal pool, and I didn't get that I was looking at a vernal pool. These are vernal pools. They, they, they call out to you.
Mr. Brezner, have you had a comment?
I did. I just like Evy to know, she said, big business comes in and clear cuts and does what they want. I want Evy to know, I'm not big business. I'm a single guy who likes to work. So if it's going for this direction with all these scientists and all this, you might not wanna waste your time, cause I'm sure it's gonna end up in litigation. Hundred percent sure. So that, that's probably where it's going from the sounds.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brezner, I didn't hear your last sentence.
I'm sure it's gonna be going to litigation, so I'm not sure if you're gonna waste your time or not. I mean, if, if it's
Who's, who's gonna bring it to litigation?
I, I'm gonna have to against the clerk, against the forester. I didn't give a thought to cut that. He went beyond it.
Oh, between you and, and, and the logger?
Yeah, this could go on for forever.
Oh.
I'm just trying to do it the way without correct the situation.
Yeah.
I talked to Mike Samble, and I said, let me see if I can't correct it before we get into this. I don't really understand him with him, you know, he's a single guy, single, you know, working hard, so that's probably where it's going from the sounds.
I'm, I'm just thinking that until you get a professional in to tell you what you need to do, everybody's sort of jumping the gun and making assumptions. Once we find out what the professional says needs, needs to be done, then there's gonna be a whole different discussion, but right now, we're all guessing that, oh, you have to put up six hundred trees. Well, maybe you don't have to. But having the professional in, they're gonna make a recommendation. Then the discussion will begin about what you're willing to do, what you need to do with the man who cut it, what the board's willing to do. Until we know that, everybody's guessing and making sometimes wild assumptions, sometimes too minimum. I just think that everybody's making guesses that they don't need to yet.
I wish we picked it up in April when it was cut.
I don't disagree with you.
You know, not in July.
But I will say, the, the things that are being proposed, like the county forester and even the other entity, are not hotshot legal experts that cost six hundred dollars an hour. I mean, it's, it's the soil scientist is probably gonna be more expensive than the forester, just the forester's free, but it's a much lower cost option than just going out on the, the private market.
Okay, so obviously then, the, 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 the schedule of those two individuals is gonna be the gating item. Glenn could be working to find a date that works for both of them, preferably on a weekend when the board would be available to, to go, and then reach out to the board by doing a poll and
I mean, I'm willing to, I, I'm willing to give um RCCD and, and Mike a call tomorrow. Um and, and see if there is any availability for the weekend. So if you want to do a, a, a sidewalk announcement now, we can work on that. I just
But if we make an announcement now
We could recall it, if it doesn't go.
But if you don't, we have to work this way.
Right.
But you have to pick a date now. Doesn't mean you can't change the date.
Right.
But if you don't pick a date now, and you pick one later, you have to re-known to everybody.
We could do this.
Um all right, so then, so then we should pick a date, set a time, uh we'll post that.
There's nothing wrong with doing two consecutive Sundays.
That's what I'm saying. Pick a couple of dates and then
Pick two of them and give me some flexibility to, to work with the consultants and um see what we can do.
Okay.
So it'd be Sunday the fifteenth or Sunday the twenty second? Or would Saturday be better?
Saturday doesn't work this weekend. Would it work the following weekend, Saturday, or no? Just, you just work by Saturdays.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that conversation.
He could work Saturday, he could do a Saturday afternoon sidewalk. Or a Sunday.
Or Sunday, or, or you do Sundays.
Let's just do Sunday morning, then.
All right, so then, as you said, Lynn, the next, the next one coming up is the fifteenth. The one after that is the twenty second.
Twenty second would be better. Twenty second would be better.
Would be better?
Correct.
Might be easier.
Seems to me the last time we walked that site, we were in twelve inches of snow.
Ellen, you have something?
Well, I'm just thinking, Sunday before Christmas may not be beneficial for the people who wanna come down to town. So I'm just saying, if, if the fifteenth, shoot. If the fifteenth is okay for you, Mr. Brezner, and they couldn't come the twenty second, would you?
I would not. I wouldn't be available this weekend.
So you wouldn't be available the twenty ninth? Would you be available the fifteenth if you had to?
The fifteenth is this weekend. I would not be available this weekend.
Okay, so
But I'd be available anytime after that.
The twenty second or the twenty ninth?
Sure. No, twenty, the December? I won't be available the summer twenty ninth.
Okay, so just December twenty second?
Exactly. That's Christmas weekend.
Yeah.
I'd be all the far.
It is, I mean, and that's kinda, the, the, the further we go, the, the It is. I mean, and that's kind of, the, the, the further we go, the, the harder it's going to be to get folks to be able to come.
Yeah, the chances of it being horrible weather and, and lots of snow on the ground increase every week we go.
Does Mr. Brezner Hand have to be there if Mr. Zilt can attend?
I'd like to be there.
I understand that, but-
You've been, you've been very hands-on. I don't think I've been on your site when you haven't been there.
Right. I'd like to be there.
Well, I, I'm just saying that if the 22nd doesn't work, you're now looking into sometime in January.
Okay.
And, and granted, we're not resolving this before May.
Right.
Whatever we do isn't going to happen until they can actually plant. We're not, we have, we have traveled beyond the planting season at this point.
If you say resolving, you mean the planting, but the moving forward and getting would definitely have to happen.
Yes, exactly.
There's no frost in the ground right now?
No, January.
December 22nd? I'm just laughing, going, seriously? Tell your spouses.
All right, what, what does the board think? We've, we've got Mr. Brezner Hand available on Sunday the 22nd. Not on the 15th and not on the 29th. So if we don't do it on the 22nd, it means that we're into January.
The, the other option is that personally, I, I feel that the scientists are the important people. And I'm more than happy to be, you know, have them. If it was between me and them being there, it's obviously them. So I'm fine, I'm satisfied with the time mid-week, but, and I think Brezner has said that he might be there and it might be easier to get
Someone away from a Sunday?
Mid-week as opposed to a Sunday and-
Could you make a weekday, Chris?
What's that?
Could you make a weekday?
Of course, unless you doubt it.
Yeah, let's see how you think.
Unless, unless we do it at 6:00 AM.
It's good. I like that.
We're, we're not getting Mike to drive down from Maine and make a 6 o'clock in the morning appointment.
And I prefer not to walk the site in the dark.
Maybe I could locate somebody who's closer than me with the same.
Maybe.
I, I just, I think the issue we're just talking about now is we just have to set a date in this public meeting or we have to renotice. So, but so as long as we at least set a date, then we have the option to change it. Is that correct?
It's correct.
So why, why don't we set the two dates of December 22nd and January 5th? Then the appropriate people could be reached out to, to see if they are potentially available on those dates. But at least we have dates that we can change without having to renotice.
Second.
Before you second, let me just, Glenn, would people have to, could, could you do a, like a, a, an email vote to reschedule? And have, because how do you reschedule if people aren't?
If, email votes are not valid.
Unless they're voted, act voted again at the next meeting.
Correct. You have to reestablish that you have a vote.
You can do the email vote, I believe, but you have to
Have to ratify.
Ratify at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. Then you all have to meet to reschedule it. I don't know how, I'm serious. I'm just not sure.
Move, just tell us what it is. We'll just go. Advisory email.
Could we grant the authority to the town planner to schedule? And then a confirmation via email of who will be attending?
We still need to set the date.
As long as we have those two dates, I don't see why we can't do it that way.
And the most you'd have to do is cancel the 22nd as long as you keep the 5th.
Right.
If they can't come, if they can't come the 5th, then you're going to have to, if you're meeting on the 7th, you'll have to set a new date.
Yeah, so we'll have a meeting on the 7th.
We're good. We're good. We're good. I just wanted to get the logistics down before everybody left and it's like-
So if you establish either the 22nd or the 5th, and we can get the professionals there one of those two days, that correspondence can happen by email because we will have established it here. If neither of those dates work, we're doing nothing until January 7th. Yeah.
But that's the point. You do need to get on the 7th, so you can then-
How do we make sure that other folks, like the two abutters who are here and other departments are aware of what what, what actually happens, what, what date gets chosen?
That if a date is chosen, we put it on the website, we put it on the planning board's tab on the website. And perhaps we could do it on the, could we do a, a slide that is on the television?
Depends on when you tell them you have a meeting or not.
Couldn't I contact Susan and does Susan administer that?
Yes, but my point is, no, she doesn't administer the board and what I do.
Okay, if we set, if we set a couple of dates, are you folks okay with checking the website to see which, which one it ends up to be? Head nods or no or yes or?
Is that more than two dates? Is that one December, January, February, March?
Well, you subscribe, you subscribe to the town and then you get all of the notices, but-
Through the town. It's not specific to the board.
As, as long as folks are comfortable, that folks who have taken the time to come to be here, as long as they're comfortable sort of following this online to, to determine for themselves what the date ends up to be. Because this, we won't have the opportunity to, to reach out to them again, so.
We need a time.
My understanding is we'll probably know before I post it whether or not we're meeting on the December 22nd.
Because Glenn's going to find that out. I'm not back in the office standing clean until Monday. If nobody can come on the 22nd, I'm not even going to post it. So there, there'll either be a posting of January 5th out on the town's website or they won't. But I'm going to suggest that you guys put something on January 7th agenda that says, discussion of site walk with Brezner Hand.
Right.
Because that will then be your third public posting where on the 7th, you can then reset the next dates. And then you've done all of your legal postings tonight on continuing.
Hang on, Dennis?
You know, I've been listening to the talk about trying to have the, everybody together with the consultant as well. Still an, an option of having a consultant that go there as soon as he can and, and write a report or make suggestions. Or if he can't be at that meeting, maybe you can come to, maybe here at, at the next planning board meeting. So that, that's another option too. I just wanted to mention that, that it's important that some, the consultant gets to see the site before a lot more snow and weather and whatever. So it's something that he could do maybe as, as soon as he could within the next week or so. And he might be available within the next week or so, except for the weekend. So that's another option that you all can have.
And you mentioned something that, that I want to make sure we, that we capture, and that is that we, we're going to want them to be on site, but we also want them to put their findings in writing so that we have it for the record.
And typically in a restoration situation, it's one thing to propose the plantings, but it's also another thing to ensure that they, they live. So they're typically on wetland restoration and wetland buffer restoration. They, the state wetland bureau does require one or two year inspections. And in September, October, to make sure that the plantings do survive and make suggestions of replanting if necessary. So that's something that will come into a report, I'm sure.
Yep. So, yes.
Speaking to Dennis, a lot of the abutters that I had in there said the type of soil that's in there could have a much greater chance of a tree surviving from natural, from a natural seed in there than trying to plant something in there with a sand, it's all sand, total sand. The chances of surviving are not very well compared to what's naturally grown in there right now.
Do we have that report?
That might come out in, in their recommendation also, you know, certainly.
All right, so Chris, you were starting to-
Yeah, I make a motion to schedule a site walk for December 22nd. I like the eight o'clock.
You want, you also want to do
And, and January 5th. Correct. And also put on the January 7th agenda. Or do we need that something?
What, the, the time first? You said eight?
Eight AM. Second.
Okay, and we'll deal with, once we do this, we'll do the, we'll do the thing on the summer. So a motion by Chris, second by Phil. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. That carries unanimously now.
And I also motion to continue the discussion, also the site walk discussion to January 7th meeting.
Should we, should we just continue this? We, we need to continue this hearing.
Okay. Well, there was talk about continuing, saying a site walk discussion. I, so, but if it's just continuing the hearing, I'm-
If we, if we continue this hearing to January 7th.
The full hearing?
Well, well, we have to continue this anyway.
Yes.
Otherwise they have to start all over again.
Yes, but you can limit the discussion to this and then also then continue it to the 21st. Because what do, other than talk about the site walk, what are, what are you going to talk about?
Okay.
Well, whereas by having it to 21st, if you do get to meet the 22nd or the 5th, whatever it is, it then gives them an opportunity to have new plans on the 21st. If you do that on the 7th, what are you talking about?
And my thought was, you have time. If you have, if they meet on the 7th, excuse me, on the 5th, if the site walk's on the 5th, they probably won't have their written reports into us by the 7th.
Right. So we're only putting on on the 7th in case you can't meet any of those dates. You can then legally set a new date without renoticing.
Okay, so-
So we will have limited, we'll, we'll have it on our
Limited discussion.
On our agenda, on the 7th.
Site walk on the 7th, then continuing the hearing to the 21st.
So, so those, those probably should be separate things. So you're making a motion to add this to, for discussion purposes on January 7th?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Motion by Chris, second by Lynn. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, unanimous.
Now I motion to continue the public hearing until January 21st. Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Phil, to continue this hearing to January 22nd at 6:45.
21st.
21st.
Sorry, 21st. At 6:45.
Can I continue the full public hearing?
Discussion?
Yeah, Phil.
Uh, Phil.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. That's unanimous as well.
Was that with new plans to be due by January 9th?
It was.
Does that give Charlie enough time to get the new plans?
Depends on when the public hearing, when the site walk is.
But I mean, just, just having the, having that scheduled gives him an opportunity to either continue at that point, whatever is necessary based off of when.
Okay, so you guys, you guys are okay with those dates? Folks in the audience, the, the notice for, I mean, everything we've discussed here is, 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 is public information. It's information that you can carry with you. The, this hearing is continued to the 22nd. We have the possibility of a couple of dates for a site walk, one being the 22nd of this month, the other one being the first, the, the 5th of January. To be determined once Glenn confirms the schedule of the other two individuals. We'll make sure that those get posted online, the town's website. And, anything else? Did I miss anything?
Okay, then always feel free to call the planning board office too if they want to confirm.
Yes, you certainly can call the planning board office if, if you have questions about timing or want to confirm something, feel free to do that as well. And you're also welcome to join us on the site walk. That's a, that's a public meeting. And abutters and, and other folks are welcome to join up the site walk as well. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Sure. Five minutes, five minute break. Adam? Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay, Adam? All right, we're back. Oops. That. Okay, so the next item is correspondence, we have a few things here. Couple of invoices from Town Engineer, one related to... The library lane, uh, site plan, which the board dealt with at its last meeting, I believe. And I just signed, I'm sorry?
Yes.
And I signed that Mylar just before the meeting started, so that's all set, it'll get recorded. And so, we will initial this invoice. Next one is also an invoice, and it's for Ginger Way?
Just say, just say Fraser.
Fraser.
One of many names.
Fraser.
14 Lock, River, and Road.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right. Uh, the next one is just tidying up, uh, if there's anything left that we need to do with regarding the, uh, cutting of the, the, of the hazard trees along the, uh, the buffer with the, for the Sleep Institute, I know that, uh, the board had a site walk, and, uh, Glenn, is there anything, are we all set, do we have everything we need now for documentation?
Board made, uh, what's the, two motions that morning?
Yeah, one was that, um, for the, the trees that hadn't been programmed, talked about on the, uh, Easterly border, that they were to get permission from a butter.
Get butter, right.
And provide that in writing to, uh, U N L, and, and then they would be, could do what they, they needed to, that they had permission from, but we only dealt with the, uh.
The northern, the back end part.
Yeah. And that we took, take a vote and approve that.
Her tree, her tree guy was there, he had marked trees, the board agreed to those trees that he had marked as being, um, appropriate for them to come down.
And so, actually.
Actually, I didn't clear that, are you going to fill? Well, the town is gonna be taking down some of the other trees on the other side of the line, just as an FYI, some of those boll pines that are dropping branches, and the one that she wanted to move as well, so. It'll be coming down at some point.
There was public comment that there was a hazard there, a site, a drive, for driving, a site hazard.
Site distance issue.
Yeah, no, we didn't deal with it, but.
On the travel, right?
Mm-hmm.
Side comment for Rich, that, I don't think.
I don't think there's anything else that needs to be done.
All right, do we have those, do we have a letter of concurrence from the butter?
Not yet, we have not seen that.
No, those trees are still up.
Okay. Next one is a letter from Jim Dufrain of T Tad LLC, dated December 9th, and, "Dear members of the board, please withdraw T Tad's application without prejudice for land unit 1, and return the balance of my escrow account."
He wasn't aware that Kevin Hatch already had asked for the board to do that, and we, we did that.
And we've already done that.
Two months ago.
Right.
But at that point, he hadn't asked for his escrow account back, so, I actually, after I had a phone call with him, I wrote in that request for the escrow, um, to be returned, so.
So, that's underway, that's, there's no, there's no action here, for us? Do we have any outstanding?
We don't, we don't require a vote of the board to.
But I, I guess the question is, do, is there anything that we know about that would still be accessing that escrow account? Any outstanding?
That's why you don't have paperwork to sign, 'cause Cindy wasn't there when I asked her.
Okay.
It's there, if you want to approve it, pending no further action, that's okay, I can work it forward, but I didn't give you anything to sign because I couldn't get a fi, a final from Cindy. You just say pending review of any outstanding fees.
So, I've said approved, pending review of any outstanding charges to account. And the final thing in the folder is a letter from Department of Environmental Services, uh, we received it on December 9th, and it's a letter of deficiency, uh, for the public water system at Saddleup Saloon, I'm assuming this is just for our information?
Yep.
So, if anybody wants to read the details of it, uh, it's here. Okay. There's that. Okay, the minutes of November 19th, which have been previously emailed out.
I can motion we approve the minutes of November 19th, as mentioned.
Motion by Lynn, second by Peter Coffin, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, that's unanimous. Okay, and any other business that may legally come before the board, and that's when you flip the page to what we were to do at our meeting last week. And the first item on that list is, I believe, a discussion of some thing that Dennis was wanting to talk with us about and have us consider, yes, Dennis, with regard to, uh... Is, am I correct in that?
I had sent, uh, some document to, for the plant to review, was about lot lines, and about.
That's this?
About angles.
Oh, assume it's this? Okay, we should probably pass that out to the board then.
Because there was a discussion at one of the previous subdivisions about what, uh, what angles, right angles, and around the cul-de-sac, whether they should be perpendicular to the cul-de-sac, those types of, uh, things that possibly should be in the regulations.
Is, is it something you wanna walk us through, Dennis, on this, on this sheet, or?
I try. So, the first one of the top, the top left is a corner lot, uh, if there's a street right-of-way, the question would be, uh, perpendicular lot lines, um, and the intersection, uh, not more than 135 degrees. Uh, it basically says either A or B is, is, uh, considered a rear lot line, the other would be the side, uh, would be a determination at the owner's discretion, so there's a question mark, as we had in the past, is it, those back areas both sides, are they both rear, or is one side, one rear? So, I think that if this was in our regulations, then it would be clear as to what maybe the, um, the owners would be able to determine that at the time of the public hearing, and would minimize a lot of discussion at this meeting, which usually, uh, goes a lot longer than needed. So, uh, anything that we could do to clarify that, uh, uh, would be, would be helpful. And so, that's one, uh, suggestion to have in, in, uh, in our, um, regulations. Uh, the next one down on the right, it's a, a through lot, um, whether you have, um, uh, frontage, if you have a lot that goes, uh, through from one street to the other, which one's the frontage? Which one are the both sides, is it front side, is one gonna be a se, a side, or one gonna be a rear? Uh, and the thought is that frontage would be on both sides, as far as setbacks are concerned, and the two sides would be side, side setbacks, and not have a rear. Uh, Kingston has side and rear, I believe it's all 20 feet anyway, so it wouldn't really matter. But, at any rate, then, that's what they would be, the, uh, an interior lot, the rear lot line would be the farthest away from the street right-of-way. Odd-shaped lots, uh, basically, uh, similar type of thing, where you have sides, lot lines, and, and, uh, parallel lot lines, so. Like I said, in, in, in Kingston, you have 20-foot setbacks anyway, so it may not make a difference, but there in some cases, if there's butters and there's buffer zones, that might make a difference, which is a side, which is a rear, so, I didn't know if that is something that might help clarify things. Uh, certainly, it can be reviewed and make changes, uh, but just something that we had talked about a long time ago, and I put this together a long time ago, and basically forgot about it, everybody, and, um, it's just, if there's something like this is, is put together, maybe, uh, Glenn, you can have your swing at it too, and, and maybe, maybe it's not necessary, I don't know, I just thought that maybe something like this could be put in, make anything clearer, to make, make the, the process go through easier, then that would be helpful.
Okay, any initial thoughts from the board as they look at this?
My knee-jerk reaction is that I still can't understand it with the Town Engineer here explaining it to me, so I don't know how it's gonna make it easier for another person looking at it, unless they're a civil engineer.
My, my next question is, and you brought this up, is, since we use 20 feet or 50 feet, depending on what the butter, uh, zone is, so regardless of whether it's a side or a rear lot line, if it's commercial on one side and another residential on the other side, your setbacks may be 20 feet and 50 feet, uh, it doesn't matter the name, is there any situation in which we, um, care about what the name of the lot line is? I, I, I know we've talked about perpendicularity of side lot lines, uh... But, you know, you've, you've given us a couple of different situations where there's, you know, you're a house on a corner lot, or whatever, that you're gonna have side lot lines, there are also rear lot lines, depending on which street you're talking about, so, um, I, I'm wondering, what is the situation, whether it's, that we would be concerned about the, uh, naming of the lot?
I don't know if I can answer that question, I don't know off the top of my head. Again, it's something that was, um, discussed at one time, uh, I just kinda put this together. Maybe it's not necessary, and if it's not necessary, that's fine too.
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's a nice guide for being able, I, I would imagine that every single situation, you know, if you have like plenty of material lots, nothing's gonna be exactly as, as it appears here, and, um, I would think, if, if it mattered, we would make a determination time, that, um...
We did have a subdivision where there was some discussion about frontage, and whether it was a frontage, or whether it was frontage on a right-of-way, uh, and so, there were some questions about things like that, so... If it's, is it a frontage on a right-of-way, or is it frontage along the street, as far as the frontage on the lot? Now, if it's like a cul-de-sac, and you have a right-of-way that goes to an abiding property, for instance, and so, what's the frontage for that lot, is the frontage just on the cul-de-sac? Or is it the frontage that's on the cul-de-sac, and the edge of the right-of-way? What constitutes frontage? So, that's one scenario, when you're asking me what.
Is that on this sheet?
No, that's a, it's a different.
I agree with it, that, that was a question we had, I agree with that.
Yeah, we did have that option.
But, you know, I mean, you're just asking me something off the top of my head, I mean, again, this is, this is some other stuff that might be of interest, and if it's not, then that's fine also.
I mean, last month, we talked about, um, the frontage along two different streets, that's providing a total of at least 200 feet, but, you know, that was clear, that they had a combined total of 200 feet, um... But.
So, if you.
Yeah, I would think it'd have to be on a, on a town road, I think it, our regulations state it has to be on a town road.
Does it have to be contiguous?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe so.
The 200 feet says 200 contiguous feet.
Yes.
And in this case, it went around a corner, but it did have 200 contiguous feet, so, um... And I think it requires, you know, a town road, but I don't think a right-of-way would count, unless it was, you know, it was built after they, town road, and accepted.
But it was going to be common town road, right?
Yeah.
That was the issue.
Could.
I've seen a lot of through lots here in town. I think it makes it very clear here that you do have frontage on both, so you need to keep your, your front, your frontage setbacks on both.
So, I have a question then, Lynn, if one of those areas, where it's 200 feet, and the other one was 100 feet, and they wanted their driveway on the 100-foot side, could they do that?
They'd have the setbacks.
Would it still be a frontage?
Well, the lots that I'm aware of have been in existence for probably 200 years.
Well, this is for something new.
I think in a new situation, the, where you put the driveway is where you would be considering your frontage.
If I only had 20 feet on one street, but I had 200 feet on the other, I could put my driveway on the 20-foot side?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I, I would not see it that way.
Well, it would be within a 20-foot setback, so let's say 60 feet.
Yeah, is there a 60-foot right-of-way? Is that something that I just heard of, or is that actual through, in this town, 60-foot right-of-way?
There's a 60-foot right-of-way.
A 60-foot right-of-way, right, 3 foot, 3 wide.
For, for a road.
So, we had a, well, yeah.
If there's a through, if there's a through lot that goes to a corner, and one wraps around one or two lots, and if I owned all the way around, one had 200 feet over here, but 60 feet over here, could I put my driveway on this? I would say you could at the right-of-way, 60-foot, your right-of-way.
Good, why not?
If you have the road running on the other side, you own the lawn, you own the lot.
It might be a safer road, it.
Could be.
You know?
Yep. So, the driveway doesn't have to go on this, on the frontage that has 200 feet? Well, you get the right-of-way.
I think they changed that, I think that's in the book now.
But it could be wetlands, it could be steep, slow.
Cause it happened once before, and I think the town changed it, that it had to be on the 200-foot of frontage, not the small one.
That's what I wanted.
Cause it didn't used to have to be, but I think the town changed that.
But there could be situations where it's all wetlands, and 200 feet.
Yeah, obviously, it would have.
But there could be situations where it's all wetlands, and two hundred feet, and then a couple of lands.
I think that became an issue when the town changed that, uh, it was a long time ago, but, because it didn't used to have to be.
So, any of these can be modified, used, or they can be thrown away? So, just...
That's good, I think it's good guidance.
Well, we, we, we could task, uh, our planner with taking a look at this and making a recommendation to us.
I would be happy to do that.
What does the board think about that? Or the board could just hash it out themselves, if they wished.
Well, Glenn, if you don't think that either, any of these options are, are worth putting in the regulations, certainly that's something that, you know, you can make that judgment call yourself to. Or if there's another scenario that might be, uh, that could be put into this.
I don't see that it has to be on the, would this be in the driveway regulations, Owen?
I don't know, I remember we're talking...
I know, that's where I'm, so I feel like...
Yeah, I don't see it.
I would have to, that's me off the top of my head, I'd have to look it up.
It spells out, if it's in a subdivision, it needs to be on the subdivision road and not the, the main road.
Right.
We had that, yeah.
I'll have to look it up, I just remember that I, I swear that because it was permitted, and the town thought that it shouldn't have been, but there wasn't a reason to stop it, they added something. But I'll have to look it up after the fact. I'll have to look it up.
It says minimum sight distance, but it's two hundred.
Could it be in the definition of frontage?
I don't know. Unless we need the answer right now, I'm more than happy to get the information and provide it to the board.
That would be, that would be wonderful. Does the board want to continue talking about this, or would you rather have, uh, Glenn make, perhaps come back with, with some recommendations at our next work session meeting?
Yeah, I think that sounds... But, go to the, uh, January fifth, whatever.
I do, I do say that I, I like the idea of that through lot with the frontage on both sides, and the frontage being on both sides. Because if you have houses on the side that would be, might be considered your back, people might put all kinds of outbuildings and things there that would be within your back, but really everybody else's front.
Yeah.
Dennis, thank you for the, uh, for the lesson and the thoughts. Are we all set on this item? All right, discussion on, uh, shoreland ordinance review, and this was an effort to look at our shoreland protection, uh, regs, or ordinance actually, it's an ordinance, yes?
It's an ordinance.
Uh, and comparing and contrasting that, I believe, to the state's?
Correct.
Requirements?
Yes.
And to see, uh, you know, what the differences are, and would there be, uh, a reason to perhaps adopt one instead of the other, or make adjustments to ours to, to be more conforming, or I guess any number of different options. So, Glenn, you and Lynn, we're sort of working on this. And would you like to start that discussion?
Sure. So, what I had done is, I sent around to all the planning board members, um, my sort of, um, short memo comparing and contrasting the different, um, features of each of the, the ordinances, and in one case, a municipal ordinance, the other a state act. I basically went over what the district boundary differences would be, the maximum building coverage differences would be, building setbacks, vegetative buffer, and the treatment of fertilizer, and the two, the two different, um, pieces of, of, um, regulation. And so, from, from my perspective, I know that there's, I know that there has been sort of a, a, an underlying hum of, of fact that it is complicated for folks coming into town, um, and dealing with a local regulation when there is a state act that also, um, comes into play. And so, remarkably, there, there aren't that many differences, but there are differences between the way the state looks at protections and the way the town looks at protections. So, as we briefly stated a couple of weeks ago, um, one of the major differences is the fact that, um, the state of New Hampshire protects only the shorelands of great ponds, so any pond ten acres in size or larger, and the shorelines of only rivers that are fourth-order rivers are larger. And for the town of Kingston, that means that the only river that is protected is the Powell River. Um, the Little River to the north and south, neither would be protected. And none of the, um, perennial streams that are shown on the quadrangle, the USGS quadrangle maps for Kingston, which are protected at the local level with our shoreline protection, um, district, would be protected by the state's, um, ordinance. Other differences, there are, there are, for instance, the maximum lot coverage, um, we are more restrictive. We, we, we say that maximum lot coverage within the, um, if a parcel is all located within the district, it's twenty percent of the, of the parcel. But, um, if you're, if the district is only on a portion of your lot, then that portion that falls within the district can only have a building coverage of twenty percent. And that means that's happening in the larger three hundred feet of the district, because we have a building setback that starts at a hundred and fifty feet. So, um, there is a, there's a reduced area for building in Kingston, um, as opposed to the state of New Hampshire. And then other differences, because we have that standard one hundred and fifty, um, the state of New Hampshire allows septic systems to be closer, dependent on, dependent upon the soils that are available on-site. So, they have sort of a floating scale of how close a septic system can get to a shoreline. Ours is set at that hundred and fifty-foot standard. So, there's, in every case that I point out here, the, the town's ordinance is stricter than the state's, um, comprehensive act.
Okay. So, in, in this analysis, you're, you're pointing out differences, you're not making a recommendation to us?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And, oh, so, I...
I, I had a question. So, you define a great pond as anything greater than ten acres. Does Bayberry Pond fall into that?
Yes.
I believe it does.
Does?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was smaller than that. Okay. That was my question.
That's the state definition.
And that, and the ten-acre size is in both that, is in our ordinance and in the state act.
So, Lynn, um, I think you were the one who started this discussion and wanted this to be brought up, so...
I started it for two reasons. One, I found that, one, everybody was ignoring Kingston's and just using the state's because they didn't really, they just, everybody just assumed that the state was the standard, and they didn't know that another town might have something different. If you were, if you go to Google Shoreline Protection Act, the state comes up, Kingston doesn't come up. So, people who might be attempting to conform, to do things correctly, are doing things incorrectly without that real knowledge, because they didn't know it existed. Um, second thing is, and now you're looking at the state, and you're looking at the town, and you're asking a homeowner, or a property owner, to say, "Okay, so, which one is right here, and which one is right there? Okay, the state one does this about fertilizer, Kingston doesn't, what applies, what doesn't apply, which is stricter, which isn't stricter?" And they have to now do a analysis of two different...
Ordinances.
Ordinances, and try to figure out the right way to go. So, that creates confusion. Um, the state I know had, um, it is my belief from, from testimony I've heard, is the states worked really hard to try to have one ordinance statewide, so that no matter where you were, whenever an engineer, or a builder, or anybody was going to do anything to a property, they knew what the regulations were without having to arbitrarily look at every little town. When the, when this ordinance first came out, um, in Winnipeg Sockeye, they didn't, a lot of the towns along Winnipeg Sockeye did not, Lake Winnipeg Sockeye, did not think that it was strict enough. So, they did ordinances that were stricter. And then the state went and added their stricter, sort of, took that into consideration, revised everything, and the state became stricter, because they wanted to make sure that everybody was doing this, uh, was, was sort of on the same playing field. The state brought into this, um, all the conservation districts, all the state, um, water quality people, the lakes associations, and everybody else. And every time they do an adjustment to this, they have all of the environmental organizations there contributing to what's in their act. So, they're getting knowledge from all kinds of people that maybe we don't have available when they're creating the work that they're creating. And it gets, um, adjusted every couple of years, here or there, every time it gets adjusted. We would then have to, we should be checking to see if, how it affects our ordinance, is it stricter or not? Do we need to change ours? That sort of thing. To me, it just made kind of sense to get on the bandwagon with most of the other communities in the state, and just use the state ordinance, with the exception that it is a great concern to me that it only covers fourth-order rivers and streams and, and larger. And I would think we might want to make it, to some of our smaller streams that do, like Little River, that do indeed go into drinking water, in particular, I mean, that flow into communities where they drink the water. Just might be something where we might want to make that adjustment, but keep most of it kind of the same, so that some of that confusion, I mean, I've sat down with homeowners before, and I'm not an expert on this, and they're trying to figure out which one to use. And what would, I think everybody's trying to comply, but what do they comply with?
Well, no, but it, I'm sorry, but from what Glenn said, if the town's is stricter, will they just comply with the town?
If they knew it existed.
Well, if they're trying to build something, they need to do that?
Every ordinance that we have, that the people who are doing any building, uh, need to go and be compliant with it. And that's one of the reasons the business has come to the planning board, because they then find out from the checklist, you know, what the ordinances are that, that, uh, the government, um, I don't see it totally burdensome. Uh, I also agree that it's, uh, it's important that we include, um, all the government in town. And so, uh, since we can have that difference, people can have to go to both, and they already do for every other kind of building. Uh, you need to comply with all the ordinances, even this, um, part, article talked about that. Of course, this did not eliminate local setback requirements. Um, even the new changes to the state law, um, they tell you, you gotta go to your local ordinances. Um, we have setback, we're not gonna change all of our setback requirements and all of our regulations to comply with whatever the state's, um, ordinances are. And, uh, so I think we should look at any place that we're kind of close to the state, and figure out if there's a reason why ours is more stringent, you know, if it's like two hundred feet, two hundred and fifty feet, so two hundred feet, or stuff like that, you know, that would be a place where, yeah, it'd be nice to align it, just so that, um, it's, it's more standardized. But I, I do think that I do not want to, um, eliminate water bodies from this. Kingston's somewhat unique in having, um, aquifers and very valuable aquifers, and, and we provide watershed, two watersheds, um, that are covered, this would not affect the extra river watershed, and there's been a lot of effort put into protecting that. That's what it would have been if they didn't do it. So, um, I, I do not want to eliminate extensions for that. It has a large reasonable impact.
I'm, I'm gonna say, the only other area that I'm, I'm, I have an active troubling concern, and that probably is redundant, isn't it? I'm troubled and concerned, which means the exact same thing, um, is, is the fact that, um, the state allows septic systems to be placed seventy-five feet from the reference line. And I, I've seen studies of, of our ponds, of our lakes and ponds in town, and they all seem to suggest that we have eutrophication issues, and that we have algae grow.
We have what?
Eutrophication.
Eutrophication issues and algae growth. And, um, that's with a standard that we have now replaced...
Stop, 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 stop.
That states that new septic systems have to be a hundred and fifty feet from, um, the edge of, of the pond, or the river, or stream. And I, I guess, um, most of, I, I haven't studied it close enough, I guess I would like to hear feedback from our pond associations. Um, but if the issue is that the eutrophication is happening because of the septic systems that were placed before we had this ordinance, and that would be probably the majority of them. Our lakefront has been developed for a while in Kingston, and our ordinance went in, in nineteen ninety-one or two. And, and so that, that, that concerns me. Um, even when the state finds that the soil conditions are porous, they allow the septic systems to be placed at a hundred and twenty-five feet, which is still closer than our standard of a hundred and fifty feet. But I guess that means, and I probably don't hear this from people to the degree that the building inspector probably hears it, what is, um, what has been the impact of that larger setback? And has that caused, um, a burden on folks that own properties that front on rivers and lakes?
And in cases...
Our standard is, it's, in the best-case scenario, from the state's perspective, it's twice as great a setback as the state's. And in, in issues, in, in situations where the soils are really poor, they're still letting it be twenty-five feet closer than we're letting it be. So, and, and Lynn's absolutely right, there, there are qualified specialists dealing with septic systems, looking at this, um, from the state's perspective as well.
Thank you.
And, and there are new septic systems, and I know this, um, happens a lot in the, uh, in what used to be the summer camps, that tiny lots that, that can't possibly meet a septic requirement, even if they're not located within a hundred and fifty feet.
Right, right.
And so...
If the lot's five thousand feet in size, again, the receiving area is supposed to be four thousand reserve feet. That's not happening.
So, um, what's, what's happened is, is those systems will have to stay in place until they fail. So, they were designed in nineteen forty-seven, and, uh, for a summer camp that was used two weeks out of a year, and, and, uh, so those are troubling systems. But when they come, when they do fail, and the property owner needs to, to correct it, we've been insisting, you know, because they have to get a variance, they, that they have a modern system that will bring that septic system up to make it as safe as possible, but won't leach out, it will, aerating system or whatever. Uh, and, and so, that's probably gonna, to, to deal with that. Uh, I think we could go closer, but only with systems that are designed to improve the, um, you know, the, the existing conditions. Um, but, you know, that would be such, you know, a more complicated ordinance. Say, right now, I, I don't know how many lots would be affected by that, because the ones that are within a hundred and fifty feet of shoreline have been built out since before our ordinance has run effect, so that they're gonna, they wouldn't really be affected by the ordinance anyway, because they're gonna be replaced in kind, or, or, or whatever. So, uh, it'd be new, new construction on new lots, and, you know, that'd be the point at which, yeah, you would say we don't really want a septic system that a hundred and fifty feet.
So, to address your concern, Glenn, I think you, you have a good point. And a lot of the replacement systems that are within fifty feet, that have to be existing lots of record, they have secondary treatment, they have like an on-site wastewater treatment plant, which treats the water better. And so, certainly, you have the ability in your regulations, if you're having a concern over this seventy-five-foot setback, you could say that anything within seventy-five feet, if it's, or within a hundred feet of, of the shoreline, would need to have that type of secondary treatment. That's easy enough to put in the regulations, and that would address your concern.
Regulations as opposed to in the ordinance?
Well, it would be for new, anything, any new lots that would come in or ask for, but it's not for replacement systems.
Now, those are dealt with. I I the one problem is you're creating a regulation that could be out of date before it's ever put into print because these systems are changing. And if you start specifying the type of system or whatever.
A specific type.
I'd just say a a treatment.
Yeah, some additional.
Yeah.
Additional treatment, certainly it's something that could be put in in a regulation. A lot of times now, we do a replacement system and we send it into the state. They say if it's like sixty or seventy feet away on an existing lot of record, they look at it and say, well, you know, it's a replacement system. It's better than it was because it's one, it was the original system was a foot above water table, now it's three feet above water table, so it's treating the water better. You certainly could put something in there that's that's further treatment.
I do think the state does two things. One, it it certainly talks more about fertilizers and the types of fertilizers and the use of fertilizers, um which Kingston doesn't. Um and then the other thing is certainly talking about what you can and cannot do to the buffer. You know, can you can you cut any trees down, if so, what kind, what ones? Can you trim, can you um, can you have to maintain certain heights, certain areas and whatnot? So it's a whole formula that they've done to prevent erosion and storm runoff and that sort of thing. Um I think a lot of what we talk of, we talk about, I'm thinking of the average homeowner, he's gonna put a shed up. Doesn't meet our requirements for a shed permit, um doesn't need a sink to look and see what impervious or pervious surfaces, they just put their shed in. Um.
Hopefully, because they need a building permit.
Not under a certain size. Yeah, there's a size.
It sounds like it's more like we have to add to our ordinance, not.
Yeah, but I'm just just saying, um there are things that if if somebody's gonna add on, they're gonna put a deck on, they're gonna put an addition on, they're gonna go get a building permit. They're gonna, this is gonna come into play and they're gonna know about it because they're going to have people doing that and taking care of that. But you're, it's gonna trigger it. But your average homeowner that is just going to put a patio in the backyard that is maybe impervious. Yeah, that sort of thing, that that's where they don't know as much about where to go and what to do. It isn't so much the the big structures, the big structures, they're, that's gonna trigger. It's little things that make the difference. Cutting down the vegetation, removing the um the roots and the trees and that sort of thing.
And you're saying that that they're more likely to just go to the state's regulation as opposed to the state's?
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe it's more incumbent upon us to make sure that, you know, we try to educate townspeople because it's their responsibility to be, you know, making sure they're going by the right rules and regs.
But the problem with that is, I mean, the state has, you know, these pamphlets that are everywhere and explains all this in great detail. And I received quite an education on that because if I were using state standards for vegetative buffers for agricultural purposes, I can clear as much as I want to enhance my grazing land, but under the Kingston rules, I have to come for a conditional use permit to utilize essentially twelve acres of my land. Good job, Lynn.
Other thoughts?
I agree with Lynn that any discussion about this should get input from the ponds committee and I think we should have input from conservation. I don't think we should do this without adding that committee in as part of the discussion. I think that's all right.
Have we forwarded this through the conservation commission, any recommendations or?
Well, we could really haven't made, we haven't, we haven't made any recommendations.
Yeah.
I mean, all we were, we were trying to do the compare and contrast.
Right.
Which.
What if we set up a task force with the lake associations, just three in town, I believe? And the conservation.
Conservation. Do you?
Isn't that a bit of a vacuum?
Yep.
I mean, there are other people who are gonna be affected by this major league.
Yep, yeah. Barbara's?
You're not, you're not putting this out as this will be the end of the discussion. It's just you're asking the other people, the other committees to also give their input. So I don't know if we need a task force and maybe you wanna do a task force after the fact, but we're not trying to eliminate anybody. But to try and include at least conservation commission is another town commission who would be involved in this to at least notify them that it's being discussed and get their input, if nothing else. I don't, I don't know that means just two or three minutes of task force. And then you'd have to have public hearings to have people on the lake, anybody to know about it and you come in and.
Oh, yeah.
Depending on the discussion, then, yeah, you might wanna set up a task force depending on what you hear from people. I don't disagree with that.
Well, one one way uh to do this would be to uh have an agenda item on an upcoming workshop, work session meeting where we invite those other uh those other groups to come in and talk about it with us on, in a sort of a workshop session. And that would be, that would be at a public meeting, which means that, you know, the public could certainly be be here and and provide input. Well, Lynn, what what do you, you're the one who sort of sort of sort of led this up, so.
I make a motion that we put this on the back burner for the indefinite future.
You you don't think you wanna proceed with with at least getting these votes too?
No.
No? Okay.
I don't think it's gonna go anywhere. I don't, if you don't have the votes, if you don't have any support for any um discussion from the planning board to look at it further, then there's no point.
Well, it well, it might be that with with that discussion, it would generate some interest in some.
I would suggest to go along with Lynn's saying, after the election, the board decides what its priorities are to talk about for the year for ordinance changes and things like that. You don't have to put it off forever, but maybe you bring it up again and see how the board decides at the time whether it's on one of the priorities.
Yeah, I mean, because there are some, as you said, some of the uh more technical parts of the vegetative buffers and fertilizer discussions um from the state are more up to date or maybe more specific than ours.
Yep. If if that's the case, I, from my perspective, I'd really rather we work on it in the winter. Because we have a reduced level of people coming to us um looking for development things that make me look at my, turn my eyes other places. Um if 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 waiting until the till March and then April, I think we lose a a good chunk of time when the planning effort from an application standpoint is lesser um in the town than it gets when people start seeing nice weather. Because when they start seeing nice weather, they all wanna build right away and we get the applications fast and furious. And when it's cold outside, I think we can have a lot more discussion about this. Um and I think that it would be that it could be beneficial in making changes. I mean, we have not changed the the shoreline protection district in a substantive way in thirty years.
So the question would be why is this so strict?
Well, my my concern is that when you start bringing random groups of people to the table on this stuff, it's emotionally based. They're like, well, I wanna protect this resource, so by us having this number double what the state is, it must be better. It's like, well, why do I have two locks on my shed? Well, because if one protects it, two must be great. And the problem that I have is nobody seems to come to the table with scientific fact of where these numbers are coming coming from and why we why we came up with them. Like still to this day, nobody's ever been able to explain to me why in the aquifer protection overlay, we have a minimum three acre building requirement. Nobody can give me the science of where that number came up from and why the town enacted that and prove to me why that that's beneficial. I personally don't wanna waste time on an emotional based thing where people aren't gonna bring facts to the table of why they are coming up with these numbers. Uh where it's just like, well, more must be better.
I I do know the RPC uh had a subcommittee, Julie Lebrant was doing on the powwow river watershed. He did an awful lot of of research on all the little tributaries, a lot of them in Kingston and up. Um and might be able to, they had a grant money and they got a fairly good study done and it may be able to show um where what the impacts are of of septic systems and proximity to water flow areas. So um you know, you could take, get some, it's not, first time these have come up, obviously, the state's faced the recommendations on on the information and.
Yeah, and and that's why, I I mean, so if, I think it's, I think it's a very daunting task and you're gonna be ineffective if you try to tackle all of these at the same time instead of picking, okay, well, this one, this one we can research and get data on to come up with why this is. Like, one of the things that I do like is, you know, about the states is when, you know, the maximum lot coverage, it doesn't just say, well, the ours is twenty, but the state's is twenty to thirty, but at least on the states, it talks about the other factors on that sliding scale of why and how I can allow that increase in the maximum lot coverage. And I and I think we had some discussions at one point with Dennis about making some changes to some of those ordinances that that would allow increased.
Well, we did up in uh on one twenty-five, just because of that.
Yep.
We increased the lot coverage area by using um stormwater runoff.
There is a legislative study committee right now going on, talking about uh septic systems and shoreline protection. And if there should be any changes and if so, where and how and.
Okay, so maybe.
That is something that's sitting in Concord right now for the report throughout next year.
I I guess my, oh, I'm sorry. Well, Ellen, it has to be recognized, so I was gonna recognize.
Well, I was just gonna say that if the board is serious about it and your issue is science, why don't you hire like Dana Trusslow to review our ordinance and make recommendations? I mean, if you want the science behind things, hire a scientist to give you their recommendations instead of everybody trying to arbitrarily decide, if you say emotionally or whatever, have her review it, she knows the state, make a rec, I mean, the board's serious about it.
We use source water funds, a source water protection grant to have her look at our aquifer protection ordinance three years ago, four years ago. She did some substantive changes to that ordinance, bringing it up. Because the aquifer ordinance originally went in within a year or so of the shoreline. Um and we thought after thirty years, the aquifer ordinance should be looked at because it's set, covers seventy-five percent of the town. And there were changes to that and we did, we talked and there were changes made to um how lot coverage could be different over aquifers that as mapped by USGS had, were better than others. Um and so we came up with the idea that we have an A zone and a B zone.
Yeah.
And the protective features in the A zone are more stringent than the protective features in the B zone. So I mean, hav- having, having a professional do that, there are probably grant funds out there that could pay for that work to be done.
Can we just go back in the history of the board to figure out when that was changed and why it was changed versus hiring somebody?
Um.
Why would it change? Will you hear when it was changed?
When it was first put in, you mean?
Three acres on a on a on the aquifer.
The aquifer would always had a standard of.
Always had one.
Since nineteen ninety-one when they got adopted.
That's what I'm saying, so something must have happened in nineteen ninety-one to make that.
The town adopted a model ordinance that had that as part of its, as part of the ordinance.
Uh if that, so I I'd be interested more in in if there are grant funding opportunities to help create that and 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 it's where you're bringing in experts to actually bring that to the table and says, okay, well, yes, well, this type of increase in the distance is gonna get you this percentage benefit. Then as a community, we decide, okay, well, that's the level of protection that we want. I just, I I just hate to see all this effort going to arbitrarily picking numbers out of the air because I just, that's where we seem to come into problems throughout the regular, whether it be regulations. It's a lot of people are like, where's this number coming from? We never seem to have the the supporting evidence.
And I guess my caveat to that is, you know, I I look at it from an enforcement standpoint. You know, we're catching people when they're coming in the door with a new development proposed or something like that, but someone who's doing this in their backyard and not following the Kingston rules.
You're not seeing unless a neighbor complains.
And and it's, if there's something specific that we're concerned about that isn't addressed in our current regulations or there's something better, I think that's a better thing to focus on, that something in here that the state is doing that we're not doing or or something that we feel is an issue right now. But I think, you know, the teeth that the town have are old and kind of pointed off to the side, not very sharp and they don't work very well.
The state has strong teeth.
Exactly, and that's what.
The state has very strong teeth.
People are always gonna default to that.
But I, but I do agree that, you know, Lynn's concerned with the fact that there's two sets of rules out there. Or as I've, and let's face it, that some people, it's, well, this is the only one they knew about, then to some people, it's, well, I like this one better than the other one, so this is the one I'm gonna say I found.
They're gonna say they didn't follow the rules.
Correct.
So I mean, you can't regulate.
Yeah.
Well, I feel, I feel like there should be some baseline understanding that the the town regulations that a minimum needs to meet the state's requirements. It can be more stringent then, but not less stringent then, right? Is that our general understanding?
Well, well, that's, well, that's, that's the way state laws work is that you can be stricter, but you can't be.
So if that's my understanding, then presumably that's everybody else's understanding as well. And if they're, if they know that, then that should prompt them to go and look and say, if this is the state's requirement, then there might be something stricter that the town has enacted. Correct?
You 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 might think that.
Yeah.
Uh that that isn't the way it often works, though, in the real world.
Slightly more light than your fellow citizens.
No, but if someone's gonna look at the rules, part of the rules for the state say you also have to comply with the towns.
Right.
If someone wants to rule the rules.
Right.
It doesn't matter how many times you tell them, show them, put it out there. People wanna comply will comply and people who don't won't. Some people will do it by, you know, legitimate ignorance, but those aren't the people you're trying to go after anyway for complying. Those are the people you're trying to work with.
I do, I like this exercise of making sure, though, that the town requirements at a minimum meets the state threshold. And I I think that that exercise in and of itself is productive. Um because if what you're saying, Lynn, if this gets updated harm work dramatically than our ordinances and regulations do, then I think that should kind of prompt us to continue at a minimum this exercise as often as the state updates there.
They were looking at a bill this year, and I don't know if it got filed or not, I don't know if this NELAS are or not. But the um the lakes organization, state lakes organization, was looking at um changing the shoreline protection act, not changing any of the requirements, but making it easier for people to understand. And it was all about making it, and I I saw the draft of what they were trying to put through, but it was just trying to make it, it's it's complicated, it's really complicated. And they were trying to make it easier for people because if if, the better you understand, the better the opportunity to comply.
Well, that might explain some of the changes, like in the vegetative buffer language where.
It's very confusing.
About what as opposed to just.
I mean, is maybe the interim answer to this, what you have provided, that it's an informational piece that can be accessible to people to be like, what are the different, you know, if I'm doing something in the shoreline protection zone, what are the differences between the town of Kingston and the state of New Hampshire? That now people can reference material like this either online or in a pamphlet or something like that that's accessible to them. So that then it's right in front of their face what the differences are.
I mean, we could have a link on the planning board page that simply has this kind of information.
Yeah.
Building inspectors office.
Yeah, I mean, they can be things to do with all types of standouts.
So you're suggesting?
Here's the requirements, here's what the state's set, here's what the town's set. And that sort of crosswalk, I feel like will.
I thought you'd been a table full of materials.
Oh, sorry.
I was being very literal.
Rid of the word, but because I feel like if people aren't going to read the town's regulations, they're probably not going to read the information in there.
Well, normally when you buy a piece of property, you're handed the state booklet on what to do. So it's handed to you and you think it's false. Okay, here are the rules, this is what I'm gonna follow.
Maybe read them and does.
Lynn, Lynn, let's be realistic, the only thing they care about at closing is the keys.
Well, they usually get this.
They don't care about the booklet that goes.
They usually get it before closing, but usually it's part of the research done, they're given. And agents that aren't from this area aren't giving out Kingston news and other agents, they're giving out the state pamphlet. So it does make it confusing for people.
Maybe it's a way to get Lynn's information to realtors so they can hand that out as well.
Well, maybe I should, maybe you should never talk to me again. It, it doesn't, it probably wouldn't be bad to just
Any market for you.
Put this, this memo into a table.
Right.
That is available on the, on the website or the Robert gives out with building permits or something.
Put it as a resource on the planning board's website and like, and give it to, give it to Robert.
Yeah, I mean, he's sort of the point of contact for a lot of the people that are actually moving from wondering what the regulations are to doing something on their land where they need to know what the regulations are.
And it's just tough because I obviously, I I sense Lynn's frustration and I, I see value in the work that's been compiled. I just don't know what the most effective way is to bring it forward to actually get the result that you're looking for.
I just figured that where the state had all the experts in, their numbers weren't as arbitrary as ours.
We're not, we're not so far away, though.
No, we're not.
Well, and were they arbitrary at the time? I mean, they may seem arbitrary now, but when they were set, were they arbitrary?
They were based on some model at the time, it's just that it was a long time ago and I, and I'd be hard pressed to tell you where it came from.
If we're talking about a number where we think there should be no alteration to vegetation, that's seventy-five feet and their number with all the science they've worked at is fifty feet, that's not a lot of difference. Um, I mean, on a, on a site, it can have an impact. But from a planning perspective, that there's, I, I wonder where the science is there that separates that twenty-five feet difference.
And there's always the issue that if, if it, if it's an issue for a property owner, uh, they can always seek relief in a variance.
And it, it just comes down.
And if they have the hardship, they can.
Sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, just it, it, it comes down to trying to set a common number for a hundred thousand different types of soils. You know, if you have an all sandy soil, if stuff's going to go right from the leaching field into the lake, if you have clay, it's not. You know, so, so, you know, trying to come up with fifty or seventy-five and when there's so many variations in the rock, there's mineral soils or whatever you have, you know, layers you have, that, that uh those numbers can't be based on science, but you can't go around and say, okay, we're gonna have to do core samples and get seven core samples and find a, a flow rate and, you know, do this and that and the other thing before we can tell you how far from the shore you can put your subjects, so, you know, you had, you have to come up with a number somewhere.
You can't have a variance on an ordinance.
No, you do, that's, that's, that's where variance is, 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 it's issued on an ordinance.
So I'm gonna throw my mother under the bus.
Oh.
But a very long time ago, I asked her why there was a difference in the ordinances back when she was still alive, back when she was still on the planning board. And she told me that Kingston had heard that the numbers were going to be such. So they, from the state, so they put their ordinance at such and the state actually came through differently.
And that type of stuff does surprise me, it's like, well.
It's very possible.
It's very possible, I mean, that's what she said, she said that this, you know, the town heard that it was gonna be a hundred.
I talked to my cousin at Thanksgiving dinner and, you know, he worked as an assistant for a hydrologist for, you know, two weeks. And he told me that this is what you have to go by and at some point in time, somebody convinced, convinced everyone else that that was the appropriate number to use.
Well, she was on the planning board when it happened, so that's what she had mentioned.
Can I just say one last thing? The, the experience that I've had here in Kingston is when we move, when we change the ordinances, we make them better. We, we took what was our, a sort of the standard wetland ordinance that was in most of the towns in Rockingham County. And now I think we have one of the best wetland ordinances in Rockingham County. We did that by using a wetland scientist who worked very closely with me for about a year. Um, I think that our aquifer protection.
And we, and we used grant money to do that.
We did, and in both instances where we've made pretty substanti- substantial changes to our natural resource ordinances, I think we've come up with a good result. So, I mean, it, it stands to reason that that would be the case with this as well. Having said that, I'm a conservative person, so I'm comfortable with what I know. And I'm absolutely interested in, in working on this. I, I, I would hope that we do.
Okay, Dennis, you were trying to say something.
I mean, I'm in the rush to say something, but it just seems to me that it, it'd be awful easy for the, the general public to have a clear understanding of what the rules are from the state and the town. And if they, the state has had public hearings, uh, public hearings when they've changed their rules, they've updated rules. And so they have a lot of input, they have a lot of science behind their current rules. And so why would the town of Kingston want to spend money, grant money, trying to redo some of that stuff that's already been done basically by the states to to, to have their ordinance and their regulations? The only thing I could see that's different is that they limit it to larger streams and, and larger ponds and and Kingston really has a, a lot more uh to, a lot of smaller streams and smaller ponds and, and therefore if, if Kingston had their regulations that were exactly the same as the, as the states, except for the fact that eh, they covered not just the big ponds and not just the big rivers, but all streams and all ponds. Then that would probably be a lot more easier for people to understand because when they say, oh, we've got a shoreline issue, deal with it. Because they're near the shore, well, you know what, you don't have to go to the state, you don't have to go to the town, you go to the regulations that both of them are parallel. And that would be a lot easier.
Except, except that if they only look at the states.
Then, then if they look at the state, then it's, the only difference is, the question is, am I on a small stream or am I on a big stream? Or am I a big pond or a little pond, because a lot of times people don't know.
But to understand that, they'd have to go to the town's ordinance.
In which case.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, but it, it, but other than that, it's based on uh, scientific data that the state has already gone through and had public hearings from professionals to, in order to get their rules and regulations. And just to say it should be three hundred feet instead of two hundred fifty feet. Uh, you know, why, why is there a difference? Why just can't, you just can't make it to fifty?
Why does the state allow the town to make it more restrictive?
Because if the town has more scientific data and if the town feels as though that they have a more sensitive area like the town of Kingston, then it should be more, maybe three hundred feet the same, maybe you should be four hundred feet, and Dana Trusslow can tell you that.
Thank you for making my point, I appreciate it. That's my point.
That, that essence is why it would be helpful, I think, to have a specialist. I just, I just have to say, my, my point about the seventy-five feet versus fifty feet, um, you can have as much science as you want and at one point in the mid nineties, the Office of State Planning spent an awful lot of time and an awful lot of resource trying to establish wetland buffers. And they got all the science out there and the science said wetland buffers for different reasons should be very large. And the state did not like that answer. Because the state, to this day, has no setback from wetlands. So down here in Rockingham County where most communities have either fifty or a hundred or like us have a sliding scale according to the functions of the wetland, which again, I'll say, I think that's the best way to do it. You can't just rely on the state knowing the science because their science gets very heavily impacted by the powers that be, whatever they are.
Like economics and landowners and people who aren't environmentalists?
All sorts of things change that. All sorts of things change that because if we went by science, wetland buffers would be huge and they're not. For, for a lot of rules.
So the best thing to do is pull a number out of the hat?
No, no, the best thing, I, I think the best thing to do is use a specialist and, and figure out what you want to do at the local level. I think that's the best way to do it.
Could we start by perhaps taking what you've done, Glenn, which was a good, good, good work, good comparison, and working it up into some kind of a table of comparison that we can at least use as an educational piece for folks? As a, as a first step and then, and then maybe consider seeing what might be around for grant funding if we were to undertake it, undertake an, an exercise using a specialist?
I'm, I'm happy to see what's available.
Lynn?
Okay.
Anybody else, yea, nay, don't care?
Go with that.
We're not really voting. It's a discussion.
You told me I wasn't voting, I'm not voting.
I'm just saying.
Well, you know, just like, like you said, the, the big reason I don't like the arbitrary numbers because like I said, you know, by, by, you know, when somebody comes to find variants. They have to meet certain criteria of hardships to be granted a variance, whereas if there's a lower standing that.
Where is there something they have to meet that at the state?
No, when they apply for a variance, they have to, they have to, they have to meet certain, you know, you know, to get a variance. So that's why I don't, I'm not in favor of just saying, oh, you know, when they pick some of these larger numbers, I'm like, I, I don't like that because it, now you have to apply for a hardship when there could be supporting evidence that already says, no, like, this is okay.
I, I only said that because that, that, that relief mechanism exists.
Correct.
In those, in those cases where it could be, yeah. Okay, did we talk about this enough or too much?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, probably too much, okay. So Glenn, you'll start by, by working on those two things for us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, to go along with, with things related to wetlands, um, you got this by email, but Ellen was kind enough to print them out uh in color so you can have a, a hard copy. Something that appeared in um one of the business magazines, Lynn, you might have seen it already, but it was a, a kind of a quick review of the, the new wetlands rules that take effect on December fifteenth. And it, 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 it doesn't hit all of them, but it gives kind of a, a synopsis of the, of the, of the of the important ones and.
Oh, I do, no, I do have it.
Just kind of a nice, uh, a nice handy tool. Okay, you, you, next item is the capital improvement plan, uh, you also received that by email. I don't know how much you would like to discuss it tonight, but the committee met three or four times and reviewed the submittals by town departments for capital their, their anticipated capital expenses over the next six years. And uh, we do this on an annual basis and it provides a guidance document and a reference document to the budget committee and to the select board. So that when town departments are, are coming to them to discuss capital purchases, uh, at least the, 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 the department and the select board and the budget committee can, can look at the capital improvement plan, see where it fits into the plan, see how it might, uh, how it might affect tax impact and so forth. And so it's a, it's a guidance document only, it's, it's, it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't allocate any funds. It, uh, it just merely shows where the, where the capital expenses are expected based on town department needs and wants. And shows you how, how those expenses line up in those, in those, in that six-year window. And obviously with the anticipated uh, uh, warrant article going forth for a new fire station this year. If you looked at the cap, if you looked at the table for the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty, next year, uh, it's a huge number at the bottom. And it's, it's because of that one particular item. And the other year that was uh sort of out of out of skew, out of whack, if you will, was the year that the culprit work under Main Street, the South Main Street.
Going very far out.
Right, right, and that, that, there's a blip, uh, 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 an increase in that particular year as well. That's, I mean, that's really the, that's, that's the short course of it. Our task tonight is to, is, is to present it at a, at a public meeting and what we usually do is vote to either adopt or not adopt, and if we adopt it, then it becomes a document that, that goes to the select board and to the budget committee.
Would you like to do that tonight?
Oh, yes, it's on the agenda and.
I make a motion that we adopt the capital improvement plan as presented.
All right, motion by Lynn, second by Peter Coffin. Discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous.
Curiously, did the original, did the um grant copy get mailed out to the uh budget committee representative?
Yep.
Yes.
So, so they really have had access to it, but.
Oh, yes.
This way they'll, they'll get it.
Now, I believe that it exists right now with a draft on it, so we'll have to put it into final form based on this vote and get it out to the uh budget committee, the select board and to this to this body. And you'll, Glenn, you will do that?
I will.
Okay. And the last significant item, the last item other than any other business, is the budget for the planning board, which we need to present to the budget committee, not this Sunday, but a week from Sunday, I believe, the fifteenth. Yes?
Isn't that Sunday?
I don't think so. Oh.
Okay, it's not like, isn't that the one that's coming up?
Oh, it's this Sunday.
Didn't we already vote on that?
Well, we did, but we have to just confirm that one of the things in the budget was um a computer for Glenn, but due to some things going on through the town, it doesn't matter what it is, um, they suggested we purchase it this year and we had money in our budget.
So we got it.
Huh?
We got it?
It's not here yet, but it will be by year end apparently, so we were going to reduce that, I have the number.
This Sunday is the fifteenth.
Yes, it's this Sunday, the fifteenth.
We have a line for office equipment and included Glenn's computer. But we purchased it this year, so I was going to reduce that line by like a thousand fifty dollars.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to confirm with everybody that they still wanted to, since we got it already, we don't really need it again next year, but I don't get to just do that without the board telling me.
Do we still have something in our budget for a projector or is that?
No, I don't believe you do.
No, we don't.
You guys didn't put it in.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, now that's, that's.
That I was gonna ask him next.
If we, uh, instead of running risk of, of having that go on. There it is, separate item from the selectmen.
Talked about it.
If we get.
But the selectman representative was going to talk to the selectmen and what they were going to do, so that's why I announced.
We're getting three quotes for an LCD screen. Well, one of two things, either a, a fixed LCD screen or a mounted one back on that hall that will broadcast live way projected.
Or on the screen.
Don't kill me, yes.
Okay. So it doesn't need to be in our budget? Well, or, or doesn't.
Well, in, if, if this doesn't happen.
We're getting the projector and the screen?
Well, we have the screen.
We have a screen and if we got a, a projector, you could get for a hundred thousand, probably probably for less than what a computer is going to cost. At least we'd have something, then if, again, that, sorry, then if again, nothing came through from the board of selectmen, we'd at least have something that people could present on instead of, you vote in favor, which is.
It's not going to look really good for us to go before the budget committee, though, and have that in there and they're going to ask about it and.
And say, you know, well, yeah, we don't trust them.
But again, is it their buying still?
There are numerous proposals for this, go to this room, including.
There are numerous proposals for this, go to this room, including acoustic tiles going in, um, a new, something upgraded in there. There's numerous things. I'm, I'm not handling it. Someone else is. So, um, the plan is that we'll be going in a selectman's warrant article to cover all of those things to include the projector. There is a contingency however, and I, I.
In some new audio?
That's one of the things that was discussed. Um, a, a guy came out to look at that. Again, I can't speak to the specifics of it, but it is being proposed as a selectman's warrant article. However, I stated the need for the projector in this room and we're working on a contingency within our budget to have that. If, if the warrant is withheld, then. Yeah, okay.
So I'm assuming you're, you're, you're then saying that we don't.
You don't need to, you don't need to put it in there.
Okay.
I think especially with the twenty percent increase this year, it's probably not in your best interest to have that extraneous item in there.
Okay.
Plus a fifteen. I make a motion to reduce the budget by one thousand fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Peter Bakie, and that's to, and that's to account for the computer which is being bought out of this year's funds. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? You voted on that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
He went to the hearing that, that passed. He said he couldn't abstain.
Chop off my hair.
There you go. Okay, anything else, Ellen, on that?
No, that was it.
Is there other business to come before us?
Yes.
Tonight, yes.
Um, as you, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, your the suit we had from Hoxridge, we were indicated. We won.
We won.
Um, I spoke with council today and I guess in an open meeting, I'm not gonna get into the specifics of that, but the assumption I'm gonna bring to the select board on Monday, we had a visit from the homeowners association there and they're obviously tired of living in downtown Kabul. Bondo buildings everywhere. Um, they just wanna know where it's going. I just wanna double check with the planning board as it was referred to the selectmen for enforcement action on which wanna make sure that we're gonna continue on that path for enforcement of the site plan. So I, I.
I would assume so because because that's there.
We voted on it.
That's our best position.
Right. And there's really nothing else for us to do, uh, because they didn't come forth with a.
Have another plan.
With, with a, with a, with a satisfactory amended plan. Therefore, the only plan that is is in effect is the one that was approved and on file with the registry and therefore should be the one enforced.
So we will be, well, we'll be discussing it Monday. As it's a legal issue, I can't get into specifics on it, but we'll proceed forward with that. I just wanted to reaffirm the planning boards.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else?
Make a motion, Wade here. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Adam. Have a great holiday, everybody.
You too.